Welcome, everyone. I would like to convene the August 19th Fairfax Town Council's special meeting and the Fairfax Financing Authority Special Meeting. And I will go ahead and go through the instructions, although I don't know that we have many members of the public. But as you know, we are all participating remotely for this meeting, as we have been. But if you would like information, and I'm going to just let people know this in case they're just listening. If you want to know how to watch or how to participate, you can go to our website, www.townoffairfax.org. You can do the slash watch-live-two, or you can watch on CMC, www.cmcmtv/27. And all the information about how to access the meeting is on the website. If you would like to provide public comment, use one of the following options. If you're using Zoom, go ahead and select the raise hand icon during the public comment time, and you'll be added to the queue, and you'll be unmuted when it's your turn. If you're calling in, you press star nine during the public comment time, and you'll be added to the queue and unmuted when it's your turn. Then you press star sixty-seven before dialing to hide your phone number. So with that, it is 6:02, and I would like to convene the special town council meeting, beginning with the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and future. And with that, Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Goddard.
I am here. Thank you very much. And who else is here, Michelle?
Town Manager Garrett Toy and myself from staff. And we have our financial consultants and counsel, Brian Quint, Ben Levine, Robert Pankretz, and Mark Pressman.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And let's move forward with the approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting. Can someone please make a motion?
I'll move approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Ackerman, and a second, Hellman. Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So let me go ahead and read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of councilmembers, staff, or other members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. I always want to ask you to turn your cellphones off, but that is no longer the case. The town, I'm not even going to read that we're going to review the agenda at 10, although we will, should we still be here. And we will ascertain which items should be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started after 11:30 p.m. will be continued to an adjourned or regular town council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And before we go ahead and dive right in, I just wanted to say that I think it's really important for all of us to acknowledge that we are in a time where we're being affected by multiple incredibly challenging circumstances. And I think the best thing that we can do right now, besides wear our masks, is check on your neighbors. We're in a heat wave. We have intermittent power outages. We have smoke coming in and out. And it's really important that we know how our immediate neighbors are doing. As the neighborhood response groups are starting to grow throughout the town, excellent things are being done to organize neighbors and blocks so that people have that structure. But as things are getting set up, there is nothing that stops you from going ahead and shouting out for a neighbor or knocking on a door and then keeping your social distance. Make sure that you know that your neighbors are okay. I just wanted to make sure to say that before we dive right in. And everyone stay safe and cool and distant. And let's go ahead and begin with item number one, which is to establish a residential assistance. I'm sorry. It's a residential rental assistance program to assist extremely low-income renters whose household incomes were adversely affected by COVID-19 and who are at risk of homelessness. And I need to go ahead and ask Garrett to give us a staff report, please.
Okay. So you may recall at your August 5th meeting, at the request of Mayor Goddard and Councilmember Hellman, the council discussed creation of a rental assistance program for residents. The program would help residents that were impacted by COVID-19, as you stated. At that meeting, staff shared some information on Cora Madera's program. At the meeting, Councilmember Kohler also shared some information on the county program, based on discussions with county staff and others. Due to the lateness of the hour, council asked if we could continue this matter for further discussion to this meeting this evening. And so for this evening, there are still several policy issues that we'd like to get a little more information from the council in order to create this program. Some of the information in the staff report was actually information that was obtained by Councilmember Kohler. I actually spoke to one of the nonprofits, St. Vincent, prior to the meeting, so I'll share information on my discussion with them. Have a slight, little different recommendation when it comes to the waiting list, but I'll get there. So first policy question, do you want to create a program? Seeing the staff, that the council at your August 5th definitely is expressing interest in creating a program, would be limited to residents in the town limits. So that's one thing, key issue you have to decide. Two, what's the initial funding? At the last meeting, we reported that there was $23,000 available in the business recovery grant program. We could reallocate this program. And I believe at the council meeting, Councilwoman Kohler indicated that maybe we should double it to $20,000. So we'll need some direction from the council. If you do allocate more funds, obviously that would need to come out of general fund reserves. Third policy issue, should we work with a nonprofit? So obviously, as staff, we have limited staff resources. We would definitely say we should work with a nonprofit. Two nonprofits, Ritter Center and St. Vincent de Paul, have indicated to be willing to administer a program for Fairfax, based on the county's criteria. And so maybe what I like to do is kind of explain how that would work. So I spoke to the staff at St. Vincent's. And how to work for the county program, I think there were five nonprofits who administered the program. And the reason that they really did that is because they anticipated that households, when they need assistance, would call all the nonprofits. And they wanted to make sure there was lots of coordination among the nonprofits to make sure that they're only providing one month's worth of assistance to a household, and there wasn't a duplication among the nonprofits. So they shared in this database, coordinate the applications. They followed all the same criteria. They did all the same document verification and the applications, and so on. And so for our program, St. Vincent's indicated that they would administer it, as well as Ritter Center. And the St. Vincent's person said, it's really not a big deal if both of us do it because we still coordinate on our waiting list. We still coordinate who we're assisting. And ultimately, whatever household would only get assistance from one of us. And so how it could work, and we still would need to work out the details, is the town would provide the funding to the Marin Community Foundation. Foundation then would transfer that funding over to those nonprofits, most likely based on how many people they're actually assisting. And then those nonprofits would make sure it's only reserved for the Fairfax residents. So we think that's all doable with the nonprofits, if this is something that you wanted to move forward with. So number four, I touched on that, is what's the program criteria? We're recommending that we should just follow the county Marin's criteria, which is it was offered to extremely low-income households. We attached the table, so you would see extremely low-income households, based on household size on that table. And how they did it was, in order to qualify, you had to earn extremely low income, which is 30% or less of median income, and be at a risk of homelessness. They have 23 people on the waiting list, and we could talk about that more. But in essence, they all used the same criteria, all had the same documentation, application process. And more importantly, they all said that they would be willing to go ahead and take applications on behalf of the town. So there wouldn't be any staff administration. All the nonprofits would handle that process, whether it's phone intake, application processing, determining eligibility, and so on. But now we get to the fifth policy issue, which is, should it be first come, first served? So the county program is first come, first served. And initially, when we talked about over the phone applications, we recognized there's a waiting list. But as staff, we thought, well, what do we do? Do we go with the waiting list? Do we do it all over again? How does that work? So in my discussions with the St. Vincent's staff, I think I'm recommending we just go with the existing waiting lists. And the reason for that is, if we create some type of new process, those 23 people on the waiting list, they'd be basically calling back, providing all the same information that they've already provided on the phone intake. Then we get into issue of, if you only have $46,000, how many people can you actually benefit if you don't focus first on the first 23? So let me explain that better. So really, you have 23 people. They indicated that it was an average rental assistance between $1,600 and $1,800 a month, because they do one month's rent. They pay that directly to the landlord. Based on those numbers, if all 23 were eligible, because they still have to do that documentation process, that would cost about, well, just approximately $40,000. So you only have a few thousand left. My recommendation would be, because these are the most needy. They're on the waiting list. Rather than making them reapply somehow by phoning, whatever that start date would be, that we focus on providing this funding, see how much is left after the 23 ever assisted. And then at that time, the council can determine whether or not you want to add in more funding, or there's enough remaining funding, so then we can open it up and advertise it to the rest of the community. So I think this one might take a little discussion, and we could talk about that more. And then number six had to do, what should the assistance be? As reported, what St. Vincent's told me, they said the average was about $1,600 to $1,800, but there was a maximum amount of $3,000. So you can set some number like that, but it seems like most of the assistance fell within that $1,600 to $1,800 mark for the people that qualified. Again, the program issues checks directly to landlords. I think part of that is the issues prevent homelessness. Then you would put the money into the rent, and then theoretically, that would free up the other income. Maybe the households would pay the rent to their other expenses they had. But the goal was it paid directly to the landlord. So with that, that's pretty much the staff report. And I think I laid out issues that we need some direction on if we're going to move forward with such a program.
Excellent. Barbara, before you start, just real quick, if I may. If, I think it would be most efficient if we went through council and asked questions about everything that Garrett has presented. Then we'll go out to the public, who can comment on anything that's in the staff report. Then we'll come back and we'll break it down again, like we did last time. But Barbara, so just.
Before we do that, I want to share something that I did share with Garrett. So when I went to Liz Darby, who's the Social Equity Coordinator, I did a conference call with her about a week and a half ago. And the question was whether or not it was a violation of fair housing laws to offer the program directly for Fairfax. Went through the analysis, and she said, no. It's not because you're not creating new housing. But one of the things she felt was really important was to advertise the program again. And she also followed up with Carolyn Peedy, who is the Executive Director of Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California. And I volunteered, because I work with Caroline, but she said she would do it. And Caroline came back to say, yes, absolutely not a violation of fair housing laws to target for Fairfax. So that was good news. But she also felt that we needed to advertise the program and felt that if we didn't do that, we may run into people saying that it wasn't fair to them. And I do understand Garrett's rationale with the first come, first served, and the fact that there are 23 people waiting on that waiting list. One aspect is, the people on the waiting list have not been vetted yet. When I first went to the county, I asked, are all those people eligible? And they said, they have to be vetted by the nonprofits. Now Garrett may have new information on that. But at the time I checked, they said, no, because the list was closed. So there was no reason to do so. So it's possible that some of those people on the list are not eligible. Maybe a few. And so I just want to point that out before we go to the public, because I think, you know, they both did kind of a lot of work on our behalf. And I had done a lot of work working with Marin Community Foundation. And then we got the contacts for both Ritter and St. Vincent's. The other thing is, Liz also pointed out, we usually think of Ritter as being San Rafael, also St. Vincent's as being San Rafael. But they want to spread out more in the county. So one of the things to think about, and I know Ritter has for sure done more beyond San Rafael, is that it may be an opportunity for us, if we choose to go with both, that we can create a relationship for things in the future with both of them and also see how that works. And so the other piece that Garrett maybe didn't share was, one of the issues was, because this isn't the business assistance program, not a lot of people will necessarily be going online. There'll be more intake by phone. So one of the reasons, I believe he and I talked about checking with St. Vincent's, or Vinnie's, as they call themselves, is to see if they would do the initial intake if we did advertise the program again. So I just wanted to share that, so everyone would have the full disclosure of the information. And I don't know if Garrett has more feedback on that, but both Carolyn Peedy and Liz Darby felt it would be important to advertise the program. And, but I think Garrett's rationale is well-stated. So that's just a piece of information.
Thank you. So councilmembers have questions for staff. Bruce?
So first of all, thank you, Barbara and Garrett, for looking into this so thoroughly and setting up this meeting to where we can make these decisions. Much appreciated. Just with regard to this question of the, how to handle the people who are currently on the waiting list. First of all, Garrett, what were you recommending? And secondly, are these two possibilities? One possibility might be that those 23 people are automatically offered, essentially somehow, the opportunity to be vetted and possibly given the aid. Or the other possibility would be that, I was just wondering if this might be how it would work, that if they called in, just with one simple phone call, not having to give their information again, because it sounds like the information is stored and can be passed on to the nonprofits. So that sounds like, by implication, what you were saying. But if they just called, then they would automatically go to the top of the list, you know, with the other 23, if they called. So that's, I'm just wondering whether, which of those are how exactly you were recommending, and which might be possibilities of those two get around this. And I do think the, I see the point with needing to advertise right away, so that, again, it's fair to everybody.
Yeah. So here is the issue. The issue was, it's true, the 23 haven't been vetted. So possibly exists, not all 23 would qualify. But if all 23 were to qualify, based on the average, it would probably gobble up 40,000 of, if you actually allocated 46, you'd have six left. So the difficulty, I think, there is you probably don't want to advertise a program if you're only going to have $6,000 available, because you build way too much expectations. Literally, that can only help three or four people, if you said waiting list people went first. Difficulty on the waiting list, and it's correct, the nonprofits would do the phone intake. I think for this level of the demographic, it was thought people may not have access to the internet. So that's why they were called in, and the people could be bilingual. And so they had the applications in Spanish. They collect the information that way. I think what's just an oddity is for the waiting list, if you said, now hear this, as of this day, everybody, you can apply, then we already have their info. So basically, you'd be letting them know you need to just call again, and then tell the people, because they have their information already. Each, the nonprofits do, although it varies who has what on what waiting list. So we'd have to do a little consolidation and coordination there. It's just the thought pattern was, they've applied, and yes, we didn't advertise. We're going to fund something. The county did. But you know, you have 23 people that immediately would qualify. And then if it's first come, first served, then once you announce that program, we would need to let them know. Then in essence, I guess they'd all be calling on that specific day for when you would actually start the program. So I, I just, I don't know, it just, it doesn't seem like that's going to work really well for people that are already in the system. And maybe you're better off, let's see how many of them qualify, and then decide how you want to advertise a program, if you want to put more money in. That's just, that's just my discussion with St. Vincent.
I hear that rationale. Maybe another possibility would be that, and maybe this is what you're thinking, is that the nonprofits would call those 23 people.
So, Bruce and Garrett, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let's keep it at questions, because I know the public will want to comment. And I saw Stephanie's hands, and then that will be combined with the discussion.
Just trying to understand what the options are, but yeah, we can discuss it.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
So I have several questions. So my understanding is that this is a pre-existing program that the county was offering, essentially, and then the funding ran out. And so my first question is for Barbara, Garrett, if you are aware if there were Fairfax residents in the approved population before the money ran out? And if we can find out what the approval rate was of the Fairfax segment? Because that would help us know what percentage of the 23 would get approved, right? Do we have that data?
We didn't, I didn't ask that, and I'm sure we could probably ask that. I'm not sure, I mean, I follow your logic. I'm not sure that you can, you know, statistically, you can say, if 5% were Fairfax and 5% got it, you know, that somehow we could make that assumption. It may not track that way, because.
No, it would directionally give us, I mean, if they could tell us holistically what the approval rate was for all of Marin and what it was for Fairfax, it would certainly give us directionally some idea of what percent of our 23 we would be looking at. Because, you know, at this point, it's been, you know, by the time we get this thing up and running, it will be two months. So some percentage of this group may have gotten employed, support from other sources. You know, there's a whole, you know. So that's a question that I have, but it sounds like we don't have the answer to it. My next question is, so is the criteria that is described in number four, is that the same criteria that is, we're talking about the 23 that is going to be?
Right. So the criteria was 30% of the median income or less and at risk of homelessness. And the real goal there, and so that's the criteria that would be applied to them, unless we change it. But one of the things that, at least the county's program was looking to, was really prevent homelessness, because as you know, you know, you have a 20-year cut in your lifespan if you go homeless. So there's a lot of things that people could do with the money, but we really want to prevent people, at least my personal view is, and what the county was trying to do, is prevent people landing on the street.
Agreed. So I'm just wondering, and we can talk about this later, if we need to look at loosening the criteria. But we can talk about that later and the dialogue. So back to the staff report. Garrett, when you talk about residents who live in the town limits, does that include our county residents, or what is meant by that exactly?
You would have to live in an incorporated town limit. So if you lived in Oak Manor outside of limits, then you wouldn't be eligible.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure that is understood. Is that what you mean by, just so, for my education, is that what you mean by town limits?
Yes, incorporated town limits.
Okay. Okay. And so Barbara, when you're talking about advertising, I completely agree. And I have a note to myself about communication plan, question mark. So do we know if we are authorized for outreach to the 23? Because sometimes there's really stringent rules around that.
You know, I didn't ask that question, so I apologize. But I think, I think we could probably have access to that if we wanted to kind of re-advertise to them, as well as a larger group. One of the things, and this may be a follow-up question you have, is, I talked to Liz Darby about, well, we could do it on our website, and do it on our newsletter, and do it on Nextdoor, which, you know, there's probably better ways, but since we are not dealing with a million dollars, that probably gives us enough outreach. And we could also have, I mean, one possibility, I'm sorry, I'm just sort of thinking through this, might be that if we can't have access to the list, but St. Vincent's and Ritter can, they can provide the information to them. Because I completely agree with you that their circumstances may have changed. That list is probably being closed about six weeks.
So guys, sorry, I'm intervening. I want to see if there's more questions, and then.
I do have another question. I do have another question. So the $95,000, Garrett, that I keep referring to, that the state has offered to us, I don't know if there's any change in that, but would that be an eligible source of funds for this?
Under the CARES Act, this program, I think under some of their guidelines, it could be. But I think what I was indicated previously is, I would probably use all the expenses where documentation is fairly minimal from the state level. That would give us our whole 95 without much challenge from the state, save us on documentation. And ultimately, that 95 that we got reimbursed from the CARES Act, then obviously, if we say that's a source of funding for this program, I think that's fine. All we're doing is just taking it from one pot to the other. I just prefer not to put that specifically in there, because then I have to provide all this documentation to the state for a program whereby if I just, easiest thing is, public safety is automatically presumed eligible for the money, and pretty much, it's pretty limited documentation. That just makes things much easier.
Okay. What I'm hearing is you want to put the 95 into a public safety line related to COVID.
Well, no, I'm going to get reimbursed for public safety. But what that means is that 95, that's freeing up other general fund resources that you could use to pay for programs. That's the way to think about it, because if you say, this program, then I have to wait until all the funding's out in order to submit, and I have to provide documentation to the state, which could be canceled checks, all this information whereby doing it the other way, I don't need to provide anything.
I think there's also the issue, since we meet with the lead through the legislative committee, I think that's kind of a gray area, because it was really where you got hit financially due to COVID. So for example, the janitorial costs that went up three times or something. I think it might be a gray area, but anyway.
Maybe Janet Colson, who I see is on the line, could weigh in. Maybe Janet Coulson, who I see is on the line, could weigh in on that because it's a, it's a, it's a real source of funds, as I see it, related to COVID. This is a huge community need. So I don't know, Janet, if you have any thoughts, I'd appreciate it.
Well, no, I'm going to have to look into specifically what the language provides. I don't know right now off the top of my head what it provides. I would have to research that.
Okay. Will you send the council a note on it then?
Yeah, actually, I could cut to the chase. I have the information from the state and what are eligible categories. If the council said, oh, absolutely, we just want to use this money, that'd be fine. I was just trying to say, all we're doing is we're just substituting one pot of money for another, so that the paperwork is that much easier. Because already right now, it's so much paperwork and documentation. We have to submit everything by September 4th. There is absolutely, there's a template, there's nothing set up online yet. You got to log on to the federal accounts, set up all this portal stuff. So I'm just saying, the easier we make this.
And I don't want to create more work for you. So I'm good with that. If you think it's, it's eligible, then I don't think I have any questions at this point.
Thank you. John definitely does.
Okay. It's mostly in regards to this one question here. I mean, basically with federal funding, which this CARES Act is, there are unbelievably long lists of hoops to jump through, and it's very expensive to jump through those. And we run into this at the Transportation Authority all the time, to the point where, you know, you might be sending, spending a huge percentage of the money just on administrating the funds. I mean, you know, we're talking 30, 40%. And in, in the case like this, this is a really small amount, you might spend all the money jumping through the hoops at the federal level. So that's kind of, in the Transportation Authority, it's known as the color of money as a, as a talking tool for, for doing that. And basically, federal money tends to get combined with large federal projects so that all this authentication and stuff can happen in, in a big mass all at once. And I think with this small amount that we're dealing with here, I, I think that Garrett has a very good point. And, you know, if we use it for something that is clearly acceptable under the federal things, and then we swap the money out. I mean, that, that's something that happens a lot on the county level also.
Just for clarity, it's not federal money, right? It's state money.
It's federal money going through this.
Okay. But I, I thought it was Newsom that was giving us money, but it's federal.
They're just reallocating it from the government.
Okay. But whatever, even, even the state level. I mean, I've, I've had grants for Safe Roots Schools, which had phenomenal amounts of paperwork where I just, I finally just called them up and said, hey, it'd be more efficient if I just went out and got a job instead of jumping through all your hoops and just give all my, you know, profits from that particular job to that. And they got it and they stopped asking for paperwork. So anyway, that's, that's all I have. So.
Any other questions, Bruce?
Yeah, I just have one other question. On item four in the, in the staff report, it says that if we change the criteria, the eligibility criteria, the possibility exists, we would need to administer the program ourselves. So Garrett, could you just clarify that?
So I did not talk to them about, you know, if we're going to change the criteria. I do know, obviously for them, depending on what you actually did, they would have to change all their forms and how they evaluated. So I'm thinking the easiest thing is keep the same. If extremely low is your target population, it's the greatest at risk, that would seem to make the most sense. Plus, if 23 households were on the waiting list, set aside how you're going to treat the waiting list, then it would seem to me there's a pretty great demand at that income level, assuming everybody was eligible.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I'd like to open it to the public.
Great.
So if you all who would like to comment would just raise your hand, I'm going to have Michelle call on you, three at a time. Michelle, are you with me?
I'm with you, Madam Mayor. And I see one person, Chance Cutrano, who has his hand up, and I have unmuted him.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to thank you all for taking this on. This is a super important issue. And I, as I had stated at the previous council meeting, I, I think I'm, you know, in complete agreement about, you know, using it with, through a nonprofit to minimize the staff time on this, given how strapped staff are. I think that's a good idea. Whether or not this, we should use the same criteria. Yeah, absolutely. I think focusing on the most vulnerable in our community, as Councilmember Kohler said about, and Councilmember Hellman about the need to focus on those most at risk of homelessness. I think that's, that is a top priority. So I agree on that as well. And then as far as the 23, yeah, you know, that's tricky. But yeah, I think it definitely, making sure those folks are, that people circle back to those folks before putting it out to other folks. If there are people who've been, you know, waiting in the lurch for a bit, and then they get passed up on the opportunity to get real relief that they'd been seeking for an extended period of time. I think that that's definitely a priority. My question is if, you know, you're thinking about setting a maximum amount, I understand that Garrett said that, you know, the average was between 16 and $1,800. I think, you know, if you're doubling from 23,000 to 46,000, like realistically, how many people are you going to be able to serve with this money? I think no matter what, whatever limit you put on it, you should be at least able to serve the people, at least around the number of people that were already on that waiting list. So those are just some, you know, some thoughts. I think it sounds like there's a lot of agreement and I'm just really excited about this moving through in such a quick way to provide relief. I think it's fantastic. Keep it up. Thanks.
Thank you, Chance. Do we have any other members of the public that would like?
Yes, we do. We have two. First, oops, I think I just, I'm sorry. John Hayes, followed by Joe McGary. John, you're muted.
There we are. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just, just want to thank you and, and once again, for consideration and your consistent consideration for the residents of Fairfax. And this, this especially is a need that we see on a daily basis. I'm with St. Vincent de Paul, by the way, at St. Vincent. So we're local, not San Rafael based, so we coordinate very closely with San Rafael. I just want to point one thing out. Since the county list has exhausted, has been exhausted, stop taking names, we have folks that we, that have contacted us. The county list also were referrals from us, not exclusively, but from us. For a lot of these folks, we have already vetted. We have the documentation for them, or we can get it quickly, if that's a help later on, Garrett, for what you're recommending. We just want you to know that we'll help in any way we can. Certainly will help and have been helping all these people that needed rental help that we were aware of. We've been helping with utilities and food on a pretty consistent basis, and we'll continue to do that. So that, that being said, just a reminder that we do have some folks that showed up after the waiting list closed from, from Fairfax. We serve Fairfax and San Geronimo Valley and part of San Anselmo. And just one other piece of information, a number of our folks don't have any income, zero income, but the average, well, the high, high majority of the people we serve make between $800 and $1,500 a month. And still manage to pay rents in Fairfax and San Geronimo Valley when they're working.
Mr. Hayes, thank you so much. And I'm wondering, Garrett, are you, are you, do you have Mr. Hayes's contact? Are we connected here so that we can follow up?
No, I've been talking to Meredith.
Meredith, Meredith.
Yeah. And she said she was reaching out to St. Vincent's, but I don't think it's a problem. I'm sure I can get, get ahold of.
I can, I can drop off, off contact and a letter tomorrow, Garrett.
Oh, great. Great. Thank you.
Terrific.
John.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Joe McGary, and I don't see anyone after Joe. So.
All right. Good evening, Council.
Hi, Joe.
Hi. Yeah, thank you so much for bringing this rental assistance program up. And I just wanted to, to discuss for a moment, you know, the impact of COVID-19 on the Latinx population in Marin. It's been well documented. Latinx make up 16% of the county and 75% of the COVID cases in the county. And so I just wanted to make sure that within all things that we do related to COVID relief, that we're making sure we have mechanisms to, to reach that community who's been so severely hit by COVID-19. And the recent Canal Surge survey showed a lot of data that the reluctance of the Latinx community to take part in, in government assistance programs like this, to, you know, to apply for fear of getting caught up in, in immigration traps. And so maybe there's a point where we need to advertise in some unique ways to, to reach that community here in town so that they can feel the benefits of this program. Because I fear that if we, we go through the normal channels, that, that, that group will continue to be marginalized and not get some, some help that they desperately need. So thanks again for, you know, taking part in getting this going. And yeah, just please, please consider the Latinx community and, and how deeply they've been hit by this pandemic. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Very important reminder. Okay. So are there others who would like to speak from the public?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. So then let's go ahead, you guys, and bring it back. And let's just go through, I believe, number one, we've kind of settled that we would like to have a program. But let's go to number two and go ahead and see if we can come to some consensus on how much initial funding. And then we'll go through the, go through the list. So would anybody like to start? Barbara, how much initial funding?
So I think if, I mean, I think we've got to be careful, but I, you know, because we don't have all the money in the world. But I think, okay, maybe this is too much, but why don't we make it a total of 60,000, which would add 14,000 to it, which would also give us a little breathing room with the additional advertisement. And so that's kind of my thoughts on that. If we made it 60, potentially all those 23 would qualify and that would leave some money left over from the 46, and then we'd be able to capture more. So that would be the thought. And I think if the program really took off, we could potentially consider adding more money to it. I mean, the program's going to really take off because that's what happened at the county with MCF. I think they went through two and a half million dollars very quickly.
No, that would be a good problem to have. I mean, not a good problem, but you know what I mean. Because we didn't see that problem with the small business fund. So I, I hope we can get the word out and, and reach the vulnerable those in need. I have a question about the 46 because we're seeing at the bottom here that the max would be 3,000. So are you multiplying the 23 times 2,000 because that's what the average has been? Or how are we getting to the 46?
So my, my issue is this. So Garrett said, St. Vincent said, the average that they were paying rent was 1650 to 1800.
Yeah.
If you have a cap at 3,000, just in case there's any outliers.
Yeah.
If you think most of them are going to be maybe, just go for 1,700. And then there's some people that'll be Section A. So there'll be less. So that's why I was just kind of saying, just rough estimates, right?
Yeah. Okay, I'm with you.
Okay. Anyone else? John, Bruce?
I have a question back to Barbara. Sorry. I'm sorry. If you, if you assign 50 though, doesn't that assume that we're changing the criteria?
No, I, the criteria.
I mean, we're only limiting it to the 23 waiting list, right? If we.
No, no. What I was saying was this, if, if we made the total amount 60,000, okay, instead of 46, okay, forget about 46,000, and we jump to 60,000. If we were going back to what we were contemplating, which was 46 and rough estimate, that covers about 25 people. I'm just saying, if we make it 60 to start out, we're able to utilize that first list, which, good information that John Hayes said they have vetted a lot of those folks. And then we also advertise with the idea that, you know, we're probably, this is probably going to be different than the business one. And I think the difference is working with St. Vincent's and probably Ritter, they have their feelers out into a lot of the community that we might not be able to reach, right? So I think if we, that gives us the flexibility to be able to advertise, but potentially start with those 23. Anyway, does that answer your question?
It does.
That's my kind of thinking.
Yeah. John, did you, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Yeah. Now you can hear me. Yeah. I mean, and just to cover section one again, I think this is a good thing to do. So question one. But in terms of funding, I, I think that going to 60 is, I would support that also. I mean, basically, the reason why we were at 46 is because we decided to double the money that we had left over, which happened to be 23. You know, I foresee that, you know, I mean, I definitely think we should go, I mean, it's, it's related to this question. I think we should advertise locally and use, you know, different avenues, you know, and, you know, this, you know, a number of people in town who can have their ear to the ground, such as John Hayes. But so I think that not changing the criteria for things, but, you know, because I think that's a very slippery slope. But yeah, I, I think we're going to need the 60 or somewhere. Hopefully, we'll stop at 55 or whatever it is. And, and that, that will be a good thing, you know, that, you know, that's what the needs are. I, I think it's, it's very possible, you know, that we'll need that whole 60 though.
Okay.
So, so thanks.
Okay. And then we're still sticking just to number two. Bruce, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, the, the 60 sounds like a good figure to me. I was thinking also that maybe go a little bit above 46. So yeah, that, that covers number two. Yeah.
Okay. And I would concur. I think it's a good number, flexibility. Thank you, Barbara, for throwing it out there. So I think we're at that first, we've, we've got one and two covered. 60,000, Garrett. Okay. So moving on to the third question is, should we work with a nonprofit to administer the program? Maybe someone else would like to start? John, Bruce, Stephanie?
Yeah, I just noticed that my, I thought my mute was on, but it's not. So yes, I think that, you know, they know how to administrate it. They know what the hoops are. They've been doing this. There's no sense reinventing a wheel. I think that, you know, if we're going to advertise, yeah, we need to funnel those. Uh, I think that, you know, if we're going to advertise, yeah, we need to funnel those people to, uh, you know, any, any new individuals, we need to funnel to the same nonprofits.
Okay, thanks. Next, anyone?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor of it, of working with the nonprofits. Makes every bit of sense. Basically, keep it efficient because it's a small enough program that to set up the whole system in any other way would, again, just, um, just eat up the funds in overhead. We should do this a simple way, and, and I think it's effective.
Okay, thanks, Bruce.
I think it, I think it makes sense. It's turnkey. I like the idea of establishing or broadening our relationships with St. Vincent's and Ritter. So I, I like the idea. The only reason why I would not be in favor of it would be because I would like to loosen the criteria. I think there's a lot more need than how this is structured. And, you know, if we were able to, if we had more staff resources to have had that dialogue for input into this staff report, that would have been my preference to weigh those options. Um, because I would have liked to hear from John, you know, do they have the flexibility to tweak the application? What, what would that look like for them? We don't have the answers to that question this evening. So that's some feedback for the group. Uh, maybe we can look at that downstream. I think COVID's going to be with us for a while. So that, that's my feedback.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, well, I like the idea of working with both Ritter House and St. Vincent's. And that way we create a relationship for the future. I think if we were looking at a very large program, you know, the county had multitude of staff, plus they had Marin Community Foundation. And Marin Community Foundation does a call with all the five nonprofits every week as well. So there's, there's a lot behind the scenes. So I think, um, I just like the idea of creating a relationship with both of them. And, you know, this may be a new area for us, uh, particularly because COVID doesn't appear to be going away. So I like it, and I'm so glad that we will be able to potentially, um, move through this very streamlined. Uh, I think it's going to be great. Thank you.
Um, can I just ask a question that I should have asked before? I'm just curious as to, is, with the county program, so St. Vincent's and, and Ritter are, they, they share their database. So when folks apply, they're, they're, they're working in conjunction with one another. So I'm just curious as to, are we entering into a, it's not a formal contract, but how does that work in terms of which nonprofit gets, how does the money work for administering this? Because.
I think what Garrett said is we would give the money to MCF to distribute among them. When I talked to Alan Burr of MCF a couple of weeks ago about potentially the program, the idea was we would just split it between them. That may not be the way it ultimately works out, but I kind of, I'm not sure. And maybe since Garrett talked to Meredith Parnell, he may have more information. But I kind of think we don't need to be into the weeds on that. Just my.
I'm just curious as to, uh, how are the nonprofits getting their money? Is MCF chipping in for their, for their administrative?
Oh, there's no admin costs, at least to us, how they.
That was my question.
And how they pay, pay for their admin costs. I don't know if MCF provides for any admin, if that's the question. But there'd be no admin costs for us, for them to administer this, this program.
That's a great question. Thank you.
Well, because they're such awesome nonprofits. So this is a, this is a win-win. Um, so, yes, I'm, uh, I'm right there with you guys in using that, uh, that partnership of nonprofits. So, yes, moving right along. So should we follow the same program criteria as the county of Marin? And who would like to kick us off on that?
Well, I don't know that we have a choice. It didn't sound to me like we have a choice if we want to go with.
I think, I'm not sure that was totally definitive, but, um, Garrett, you want to answer that? So before we spend a lot of time on this?
So I did not ask them, let's say, I didn't ask them, hey, what if we said rather an extremely low, very low, fifty percent median income, oh, what exactly, as the threshold, what exactly does that do that? What exactly does that do to your programs? Is it just changing some of the application? Uh, is that fine? So I don't, I didn't know. I didn't ask that question. I do know for Corder Medera, Corder Medera went up to, uh, I think very low, which was like, I think that's like seventy, eighty percent a medium, and they, that's why they did their own program, because they went up a lot higher, required some documentation. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure they had as much demand. I think they did twenty-three. We have twenty-three on the waiting list, and we haven't even advertised the program. So a little difference there. So I did not ask that question, although I do believe it'd be easier to at least start this way. And then as we evaluated later, based on demand, it could be, you use up all sixty just on this lower criteria. Then you have to debate whether or not you wanted to fund and allow, sorry, more people at a higher income level to apply.
I think the other piece of it is, I mean, I'm just going to weigh in, is I think we should just stick with that. We're not dealing with a lot of money. And, um, you know, the higher income people may actually even have higher rent. So it might get sucked up. I mean, sure, it's not a lot higher, but, um, I think we ought to just stay with what they've got, that program works for now. You can always reevaluate it later. If, um, you know, for some reason we're sitting there with money left over, which is probably going to be highly unlikely.
Okay. John or Bruce?
I, I concur.
At, as do I. I mean, I, I think it complicates it, you know, I mean, it, on a bunch of levels to change the criteria. I think at this point especially, we should just stick with the existing criteria.
Um, I don't concur. And again, I wish we had this information going into this meeting, but, um, since we don't, I'm happy to proceed.
Okay, I, I again have a question. So when you checked with Corder Medera, um, Garrett, did Corder Medera have, uh, have residents that were on the county list? Or did they just start over and?
No, they did, they did their own program. They picked a higher income level. And they also helped, um, homeowners with mortgages.
Right, but they didn't probably have someone like Barbara who went out and figured out that there was a St. Vincent's-Ritter program with MCF.
Oh, no, they knew about it. They, they knew how the county operated their program. I think they decided for what they were trying to do and the income levels they were approaching, they just thought it was better served to administer it in-house as opposed to using the county program.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just wanted to know if there were any Corder Medera residents on that, on that county list that were waiting.
Oh, I don't know. There, there may have been, but if there was, I'm sure they just let them know about their program. Because in essence, they funded everyone's requests who applied before their deadline, Corder Medera's deadline.
Okay, yeah, and I would concur with you guys. I really, I, I, I believe strongly that it should be for the extremely low income. We're not dealing with, um, enough money. And I know there's enough need in the extremely low income, um, to cover what we have for now. So I'm really comfortable going forward, and then we can reevaluate. Um, let's see, we're on to number five. Should it be first come, first served? So how do we want to, how do we want to look at the waitlist versus our own advertising for our own program? John?
Okay, I'll jump in then. Um, yeah, I think that it's important to, to honor the original twenty-three people on the county's list that have not been vetted, but are likely to come through okay. But I also feel we, we should be advertising, you know, within Fairfax on, you know, any other channels that haven't been advertised on, um, so that we have a, a comprehensive group of people who are, you know, in need. And so, um, I suppose, you know, since we're talking about increasing the, the pool of funds, then, um, yeah, I think it's good to honor the first come there and then continue to have the first come approach. Uh, you know, that should be included in the advertising. It's like, oh, get your name in because, you know, if you hem and haw on this, you're going to get farther down the list, so.
Okay. Next.
Um, I, I would like to understand from the existing waitlist, the twenty-three or twenty-four, um, what the disclosure opt-in, like what those people have, you know, agreed to, because I think an outbound phone call, providing information about this new program, we, you know, renewed a Fairfax program, we wanted to let you know about it. I think that type of outreach is, um, really critical and that those people should be prioritized. I'm not a big fan of the use of the word advertise in this context personally. Um, but I prefer communicate. Um, but yes, as, as much as we can. And we can think about use of funds related to that. So if John or, or our partners, Ritter and St. Vincent's, can let us know what the legal.
Maybe if I understand correctly, i-if the council moved forward with a budget of sixty, and if you said, okay, if you're on the waiting list, you can go ahead and get processed. We'll communicate to the community that, no, this program is available and you need to call a certain number, whether it's St. Vincent's or Ritter Center or whatever, um, that would be how it would work. So they would just automatically, those people are on the waiting list, they would just go down that waiting list and start verifying their eligibility. And then those people would be funded, all the new people coming in.
Oh, I see. They're, they're, they're like in a pending status, and they would just?
Yeah, they would go in officially. If they don't already have all the documentation, they would officially get the documentation verified. And then they would fund whatever of the twenty-three, and then all the new people calling would just be how they typically.
Are you sure that's how it works? Because what if they don't, they no longer in need? Don't they need to verify that they're still, they still want?
In, in my brief discussion on that, I think that's something they would confirm. But they were almost a hundred percent sure that none of these people's circumstances changed dramatically, where they wouldn't be eligible when they call them. So, yes, right.
They have to make contact, though, right?
Yeah, they, they would. They would go back and they would contact them because it's been a while.
Yeah, and my, so my point is if they make contact, then you would prioritize the twenty, those first twenty-three first?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good to me. That's what I was trying to, uh, trying to suggest earlier, that, that, uh, there'd be a way to proactively contact those people, or at least attempt to contact them. And, uh, on the part of the nonprofits, just to let them know that, okay, this has been started again. They're now at the top of the list, and, uh, are they still interested? And if so, there, it's just as if they had just called and given all their information. So that makes sense to me. Yeah, absolutely.
Barbara?
If some. I would, so, yeah, first come, first served. The twenty-three or twenty-four that are on the list, um, at least from what we just learned from John Hayes, they have vetted a bunch of them, and I'm sure they'd be willing to do follow-up calls. And then we do our outreach or communication, or they do it for us. And that might be something that, I mean, I think we could probably do the simple kinds of things, like the website, the newsletter next door. And they could do more outreach to the people that they know are probably waiting in the wings already. And I'm sure Garrett could follow up with them to find out how they would do that. But I like the idea of getting those first guys that have been sitting there waiting for probably five or six weeks now. Okay, got it. Thanks.
So can I, I just have a question again. Um, what if, you know, we get those twenty-three and twenty-three are, are eligible? I just did the calculation, that's thirty-nine thousand and a hundred dollars. So it gives us about twenty, which would cover about thirteen-ish people up to the sixty. And what if we got, uh, you know, many, many more? They would just go on a waitlist, and we would see how it, how it goes. So we just need to communicate it out that way.
I think we have to be clear when we do our outreach, and also St. Vincent's and Ritter would also have to be clear. Right now, we're looking at a total pot that's very limited. If they got a lot more, um, is, I think that's when we could reevaluate. So, but I think they should be clear. It's not, you know, right now it's sixty thousand. There are already people that'll be vetted or whatever we call it. But let's just be clear what we have, so we know our limitations as well. And then it could always come back to council. If they say there's forty more people and we're estimating that's going to cost another thirty thousand, I think that's something we would really entertain. If they come back to us and say there's two hundred more people, I'm not sure that our budget, we can do that right now. But I think that's where we see how it goes, right?
Mm-hmm. Um, so if no one else has anything to say, I think we're there, um, until we get to number six. So Garrett, was that clear enough for number five? John?
If I may, because a number of people have mentioned, you know, and perhaps advertising probably is the wrong word, but people kind of, you know, were getting the word out. And a lot of people have mentioned, you know, the web newsletter, next door, things like that. These are all electronic communication things, and that really goes to the, you know, i-if somebody is truly hurting, they're going to have less, if not no, access to that. And so I think we need to.
Can I just interrupt you and say, we've already talked about St. Rick, uh, Ritter and St. Vincent would do the other outreach. So we're not limiting ourselves to only those things. They would do the other outreach for.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there's not holes in the situation. Because, I mean, I think that Ritter and, and St. Vincent's are good organizations, but we can't assume that they get everybody. That, that's what, all I'm saying.
May I suggest that, that possibly something be put up, even if it's just something in writing, be put up at the food pantry?
Yeah, that's a great, a little flyer, maybe even. I like it, Bruce.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so, um, we are now at how much should the rental assistance be? Who would like to start that one?
I'll go. Um, I, it would be for one month only, like the county's program. And I think we should stay with the maximum assistance amount of three thousand. Potentially, we could go to two thousand, but it's very possible that, based on the estimate, that we've gotten, that there would be very few of those, maybe. So I'm just saying, let's lead it at the three thousand. That's what people know. And just stay with it, even though it might get us in a pickle later if there's too many of those people.
Garrett, would there be any, uh, unlike changing the criteria, which might affect whether the nonprofits can efficiently jump in and get this started right away and administer it for us? This sounds, seems to me that if we were to decide to change the maximum amount, let's say to twenty-five hundred, uh, that I would guess wouldn't have a, a big administrative cost to the, to the, uh, to the nonprofits who are administering it. Is that, would that be correct?
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Yeah. I would suggest we might maybe drop it to twenty-five hundred, just because we are, the, the criteria is for, for the, uh, the lowest income group. And so we would like to, we, we would not expect that many people in that group are paying three thousand a month in rent. I hope not, but, um, that it would just make sure the money goes a little farther. Probably wouldn't have any actual material effect.
John, Stephanie?
Yeah, I mean, the three thousand sort of aligns more with where I was going with the loosening of the criteria. I think, you know, the state is at sixteen percent unemployment, I think. So I wanted to sort of open it up a little bit more to those in need, um, but we can revisit that. Um, I, I'm fine. I'm fine with 2,500 and I'm in agreement with Bruce on that.
John?
Yeah, and I think myself also, I mean, I suspect that the 3,000 ceiling was adopted to the county because they weren't really sure exactly what the experience on the ground would be. And we actually have the benefit of seeing what the average amounts are. You know, that, that might be a circle back question to see if there, you know, how many cases there were, you know, county-wide, you know, just informationally, but I don't know how we do that for this meeting. But I think 2,500 seems, that's reasonable. I mean, because we're, we don't have anywhere near as deep pockets as the county does. And I think it's good to be conscious of that.
Okay, so that leaves me with a question again.
2,500.
Barbara, you're muted. Were you saying something?
I'll change mine to 2,500. Everybody's convincing.
Okay, well, I was going to drive it down a little bit and I guess my question before comment is, so you're saying at a max of 3,000. So if someone applies and that money is going to go directly to the landlord, is that correct? So I was going to say, as looking at the numbers, if we have 23 and then we leave space for, let's just say, 13 more. So that gives us 36 people we'd be assisting. That's $1,700. If we take it up to 25 and you do the math, which I didn't do, we're going to be serving barely the 23 that are on the list right now. And that means there won't be money for, if you do 36 times 17, it's 61,000.
Renee, I think you're kind of misunderstanding. It's not that they would pay $3,000. They pay one month's rent. And what the county is saying is the average is 1650 to something like 1,800. They just had, so it's not, it's one month only, whatever it is. And so don't think about, nobody gets $3,000 if their rent is 1,000. They get 1,000.
Got it.
Michael is, if their monthly rent is higher than whatever our cap is, they still get the cap amount. They don't just get.
No, they don't. Yeah, they get the cap amount. So they would have to maybe work out a payment schedule or, and maybe the nonprofits help them with that. But the other thing is, maybe their landlord would give a break in that month's rent. You never know.
Okay, well, not to be contrarian, but I would, I would keep it at two. I would rather serve more people than put more people on waitlist. But if you guys are set on 25, I'll go with that too.
Renee, I think though, just think about like large families and the average rent and Fairfax and so forth. So, I mean.
Yeah, no, I understand. But I think when I connect it to homelessness and the potential of people absolutely losing their housing, then I'd rather, it's all good. It's a, it's a great assistance for people and anything we can do to help people keep their, their, keep people housed. So we have now made it through this. So Garrett, have you got the direction that you need in order to move forward?
Well, what I would need is, for the actions, you would just need a motion, you authorize staff to curate the program. As we discussed, I could go through it if you like. And that, that includes authority if I have to enter into any agreements with any of the nonprofits or whatnot. I don't know if I'll need to, but that's just what that authority would be. And then your section action would be appropriate general fund reserves of 36, 37,000 and reallocate funding from the business recovery program of 23,000 for a total of 60,000 to fund the program.
Okay.
Actions we would need to create this.
Okay, that's great. So who wants to take on making the motion? Stephanie, she's going for it.
What Garrett just said. Am I allowed to do that? No, I'm not. I have to recap.
Well, no, you don't have to. You could say.
Garrett, recap.
Your motion would be you're authorizing staff to create a residential rehab, residential rental assistance program, which includes entering any necessary agreements and sets the program criteria discussed, which is 60,000 funding, letting us do the waiting list. We'll advertise, communicate outreach with the nonprofits, a cap of 2,500 and follow the criteria of the program, of the existing county program. I think that's what would be in your motion.
I did not capture all that. I'm sorry.
I think if you said motion as indicated by staff for the program, that would work.
I would like to make a motion to establish a residential residential assistance program as captured by staff.
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, Hellman, and a second Kohler. Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So congratulations, you guys. We have a wonderful program. Hope will help many people.
Okay. One essential part is I would like to move appropriating general fund reserves of 37,000 to.
That was in, I think that was.
Garrett said he needed two motions.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Thanks for, thanks for listening, John.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so I moved to appropriate general fund, fund reserves in the quantity of $37,000 and reallocate funding in the visits recovery fund to fund the program.
I would make a friendly amendment to say a total of 60,000 because we're moving money from the other program.
Okay, that's for, yeah, the 37 plus the 23 makes 60,000, so.
So just so you accept the friendly amendment.
I do accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, is there, okay, so we have a motion, Reed, and a second Kohler.
We're good.
Council, Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman. And myself, I vote aye. So both motions carry.
Thank you. Thank you, Garrett. Thank you, Barbara, for, both of you for the legwork on this.
Indeed.
So at this point, we are going to take a recess of the special town council meeting. And we are going to, unless we actually need a recess, is everyone okay? Oh, we're being asked for two minutes. So we're going to take from 7:18 to 7:20 and be back in two. Thank you. So we've recessed the Fairfax Town Council Special Meeting and are convening the Fairfax Financing Authority Special Meeting. And this is the second part of the regular agenda. And the item is to, is the annual confirmation of the officers of the Fairfax Financing Authority, or the FFA, as required by the bylaws, and adopt a resolution establishing a regular FFA meeting on September 2nd, 2020. And the town manager is the executive director of the Fairfax Financing Authority. And so I will ask you for a staff report.
Okay, so you've convened the Fairfax Financing Authority. And Michelle, do they need to do a roll call vote? I just thought about that. Or the Financing Authority, call the meeting to order?
A roll call, yes, that would be nice. Would you like me to do that? Oh, Chair.
So today, the Fairfax Finance Authority, so I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Just for a technicality, these are board members. And you have a chair, a vice chair, and I'm the secretary of the Fairfax Financing Authority.
Board member Kohler here.
Board member Kohler.
Here.
Board member Hellman.
I'm here.
Board member Reed.
Here.
Board member Ackerman.
I am here.
And I am the chair and I am here. And I did call to order the Fairfax Finance Authority. And if we could go ahead and have Garrett give us a report, but also would you please introduce who else is on the call with us right now? Michelle?
Sorry, you want me to do that? Yes, I will do that.
Go ahead.
We have Mark Pressman from Wolf Hansen waving. Ryan Quint is with Quinton Thimmick. And then we have Robert Pankratz with Wolf Hansen. I'm just trying to remember who everyone's with. Ben Levine, your camera's not on. If you'd like to turn it on, you're welcome to. And with Wolf Hansen, there you are. And we also have Janet Coulson, our town attorney, on the line, and Mike Byvret, our finance director.
Did you mention Mark Pressman? I didn't hear that.
Yes, I started with him.
Apologize, apologize.
Okay, perfect. So can we please have a staff report, executive director, toy?
Sure. Okay, maybe as some background, since the Fairfax Financing Authority doesn't meet very often. The Fairfax Financing Authority is a joint powers agreement between the town of Fairfax and the California Municipal Finance Authority. Its primary purpose is to assist with financing, refinancing of certain debt obligations for public facilities. The Financing Authority actually has the power to sell bonds to public or private placement, negotiated sales or public. And most importantly, the town council sits as the Fairfax Financing Authority Board. Town staff acts as staff to the board. And so that means the town boards all the accounting and administrative functions of the Finance Authority. And so what we have for you tonight are two, two actions. The first action is some more perfunctory, what you have to do for your first meeting every time the body meets is you confirm your officers. So as we indicated, the town council sits as the Financing Authority Board. So that means the mayor is the chair, vice mayor is the vice chair, and the rest of the council members are directors or board members of the Financing Authority. The town manager, I'm the executive director, town clerk is the secretary. As a town manager, I also serve as a treasurer and controller. So your first action is just to confirm that the officers for the year. Now, the second action has to do with the refinancing option of some pension obligations. That's later on, that's the next item on the agenda for the town council. So, and that has to do with refinancing a 2017 lease agreement as well as our unfunded liabilities. Now, the recommendation to the council, which is the next item, will be that we go ahead and proceed with that process, which then culminates in a second. However, for the Finance Authority, to even have part of the process considered that refinancing, you actually have to set the next regular meeting. So this is a special meeting of the Financing Authority. What we're asking the Financing Authority to do is set a regular meeting for September 2nd. At that time, the Financing Authority and the council will have the meeting at the same time. At that time, then you'd be considering the next steps or the actual documents for proceeding with the financing. So what I thought is just to make clear tonight, the Financing Authority is not taking any action related to the financing other than you're going to have a motion to confirm the officers, which is something you have to do every year when you have your meeting. Two, is you're actually going to set the regular meeting of the Financing Authority on September 2nd. And what I would like is rather than get into the details of what this financing option, refinancing option is, I would suggest we just defer that discussion to the council meeting, which is the next item, and get into that level of detail because you'll have to go over it all over again. And more importantly, Financing Authority's not really opining on that at this time. You're just setting your regular meeting so you have an option to consider that option on September 2nd. So that's pretty much a staff report.
Stephanie?
Thank you. The confirmation of officers, forgive me if you already mentioned this, is this the current composition of officers or are we making any changes?
No, it follows the bylaws. I think the main thing is it, it just, I'm not sure why it's like that, but it confirms, it just requires you to confirm the officers and then.
The town manager is always the ED and the treasurer?
Per, per the bylaws. And a lot of that is just because you very rarely ever meet. And when you do, it's pretty much for refinancing. So I think the last time we met was in, what, 2016?
Yeah. Well, the last time we met is 2016?
I think so. We did the lease agreement. Maybe, could be 17. Trying, we stuck it in the staff report. 2000, November 2016. That's when the last time the Financing Authority met.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you. I'm wondering about the proposal to not get into the nitty-gritty of the refinancing option as the September agenda is likely to be fairly full?
No, I think that's not, correct me if I'm wrong.
Is that not what you just said? I thought you said that we're not going to vote on anything, but we're not, and we're not likely going to get into anything this evening.
No, just the financing, the Financing Authority is not actually discussing the financing options. You're actually setting the regular meeting in September so that at that time, then you'll consider the finance, you'll consider the documents related to the financing because the council, as part of your action for the next action, has to actually make the request of the Financing Authority. So I think it's easier to think about it as, it's just two simple actions for the Financing Authority so you can keep your options open, but the bulk of the detail is all going to come from the council discussion. And if the council decides not to move forward, then really there would be no need for the Financing Authority meeting in September.
So, so hold on one second. Stephanie, in number three, we're going to get into the nitty-gritty. It's just number two that we don't want to go into the nitty-gritty twice. There is no nitty-gritty with number two.
I don't have a number three on my staff report. I'm sorry.
No, it's.
It's on the agenda.
Agenda.
Okay.
Basically, we are legally setting the stage for what we're going to do next and then we have to approve that at a regular council meeting. So that's what September 2nd's all about.
Regular Financing Authority meeting.
It's, yeah, it's convoluted, but it's, it makes it legal.
All right, then still the new kid. You got to give me a little slack here. Okay.
Any other questions or would someone like to make a motion on number two so we can go forward?
You have to ask for.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry about that. Yes, could we please go out to the public if there are any members of the public that would like to comment?
And again, this is just the setting of the, the, these basically perfunctory details to leave our options open. So this is not getting into the nitty-gritty. We'll get into that right away in the next agenda item on the council meeting tonight.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do not see any members of the public who wish to comment.
Okay, excellent. And Stephanie, thanks for helping clarify. It's, oh, that's, that's, that's the job.
If you think it's hard for us, it's the public really, yeah, they got to figure that out too.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion. First, to confirm the officers of the Fairfax Financing Authority per the bylaws. And also to adopt a resolution setting September 2nd, 2020 as the regular meeting date for the board of directors of the Fairfax Financing Authority.
Okay, so we have a motion, Reed, and a second Ackerman, Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that carries. And then I'm going to go ahead and close the Fairfax Financing Authority Special Meeting. And we are going to reconvene as the town council. So we take our board member hats off and we're going to move forward as council members to item number three on the agenda, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the commencement of proceedings in connection with the issuance and sale of lease revenue bonds of the Fairfax Financing Authority to finance and refinance town pension obligations to the California Public Employees Retirement System, or CALPERS, in an approximate amount of $9,600,000, retaining an underwriter, placement agent, bond counsel, and disclosure counsel, and directing certain actions, including the acceptance of the proposal from Capital One Public Funding LLC in order to lock in the interest rate offered by such proposal. And I'd like to turn it over to the town manager and the finance director.
Okay. Sure, thank you. Oh, sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So before I turn it over to the town's municipal advisors, Wolf Hansen and company and bond counsel, just to provide a little background, you may recall back in May that you actually authorized our municipal advisor to explore options for refinancing 2017 lease agreement as well as the town's current unfunded pension liability. Together, those numbers add up to approximately 9.3 million. At that time, there were some different options considered. One was renegotiating an interest rate with Capital One, which currently holds the 2017 lease agreement. That's no longer an option. Two was to refinance the lease agreement with a new lender. I think we determined now that it's not financially, economically feasible. And then it was refinancing the town's current unfunded liability and then combining the 2000, refinancing the 2017 lease agreement and the town's current unfunded liability, which in essence, when the, if I just go through the presentation, that will be the recommended approach. As you may recall, we actually met with the Finance Committee back in June 22nd and July 14th. This item was originally scheduled for the council's August 5th meeting. Recommendation at that time from the Finance Committee and staff was that we move forward with a street lease option for Town Council consideration and not proceed with a validation process. But on the August 5th meeting, we actually continued this item to this meeting because prior to the August 5th meeting, we actually got a letter from Capital One indicating they were interested in a private placement and we needed some time to evaluate that. So where we're at now, as you'll see as you go through the presentation, that if we do do this refinancing, we'll save approximately 3.6 million in interest payments compared to the current amortization schedule for CALPERS. With that, what I'd like to do is go ahead and turn it over to Wolf Hansen and company. They'll go through much more detail, advantages, disadvantages, and how the savings process all works. So with that, I don't know if it's going to be Bud or Mark or Robert to do the presentation, but I'll, I'm going to put the share screen on of your presentation. So if you just give me a couple of seconds. And then Mark or Ben or Robert, if one of you want to go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll take the lead and get support, I hope, from Bud and Rob and Brian as appropriate. First of all, I'd like to thank and indicate that our belief is that Garrett put together a very, very thorough staff report for your, for your council consideration and better understanding of relatively complicated transaction. He did a really good job and hopefully it answered a lot of questions you might have otherwise had. And it's a good introduction to our presentation, which I'll go into now. I don't think we need to get, do too much discussion on page one. Page two, we start out, let me give you sort of an overview. What we're going to do is we're going to give you an overview of the 2017 lease. Then we'll give you an overview of CALPERS and how it works. Then we'll give you an overview of refinancing of the existing UAL that is owed to CALPERS. Then we'll do a summary that combines all those things as far as the savings. And then we'll, we'll turn it over to the council for, for your discussion. So on slide number two, the overview of the 2017 lease. Originally, it was issued in the amount of 3.8.6, $3.86 million. It was structured with, it was secured by the Town Hall, the fire station, the pavilion, and the corporation yard. That transaction saved the town a little over $1 million, $1,023 and change, which is, would be realized over the 21-year life of the lease. The lease has a remaining principal balance of $2,748. And the town pays interest on that at a current rate of 5.4%, which was marked at the time that it was issued. The lease is held by a single owner, Capital One LLC. And the lease has prepayment restrictions that Capital One has agreed to waive 102% of the remaining par amount in 23, 2023, plus interest to that date. If they are allowed to repurchase this lease as well as the new, the new funding of the CALPERS UAL. Refinancing of this lease will create additional savings for the town over and above the $1 million, $1,023 that you already have locked in. On slide number three, we go to, this is the, the sources and uses of funds for the refinancing. We would have a new lease in the amount of $2,888. That would be enough to pay off the existing 2017 lease in the amount of $2,797,464. There would be costs of issuance of $90,000, and that's how you get to the total of 2.88 million. We're anticipating currently that the bond issue would be dated and closed on October 15. At least that's where the numbers were run at, at that, with that closing date. If I'm not mistaken, Capital One would be able to accelerate that closing date to September 30th.
Mark, Mark, you may want to point out that, that term sheet from Capital One needs to be accepted by August 21st. And then the deal needs to close by September 30th. That's how those dates work.
That's correct.
And I'm sorry, just real quick. So and then when would it be locked in?
We, we, go ahead, Mark.
The rate is already locked in until this Friday. If you accept it by this Friday, you're locked in at a 3.45% interest rate, which is just about 2% lower than what you're currently paying at 5.4%. So it's, it's five basis points off of two, two percentage points lower. Yes. Your video, your audio is not on.
Sorry. So the action that we would potentially take at our now scheduled regular meeting of the Fairfax Finance Authority on September 2nd would be the closing. But the acceptance of these terms would be done based on our, our recommendation tonight.
Yes.
Oh, wait, 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 Mark. The, the, to clarify, we need to, if you decide to move forward, you would have the, the, the town manager accept the terms on August 21st. Then on September 2nd, all of the documents that would lead toward the close will then be approved by the council. And then between September 2nd and September 30th, the remaining actions will be taken, not needing the Town Council, to result in a close by September 30th. And as long as we do that, except by August 21, approve documents by September 2nd, and then close by September 30th, we have the locked rate and we will close at that locked rate on September 30th, and the savings will be locked in.
And by the way, we, when we were talking with Capital One initially, they started off at a 3.65% interest rate. And subsequently, based on our discussions with them showing how, what a great deal this was and so forth, they were able to come down to a 3.45% interest rate. And since they committed to that, interest rates have risen about, what, 10 or 20 basis points, Bud?
Yes, at least 10, 10, 10 basis points on the short rates, the government rates, and almost 20 basis points. When this deal was done, the, for example, the 30-year treasury that you hear referenced all the time, and everything is priced off of that, was at about a 1.25. Today, it's a 1.41. So theoretically, if we were doing the deal today to get the lock, it would be much, much higher than the 3.45. So it's very good that we have that locked rate, potential of that locked rate, and it's in our ability to, to lock it at this point.
Okay, then going on to, so the proceeds of this, this issue would pay off the existing 2017 lease. But that is also connected to the, the refinancing of the UAL on the, the CALPERS obligation. But then going on to the next slide, page five, there you see the 4, 3.45 interest rate, the amount of interest that would be paid on the new lease and the total debt service. These numbers were run by Brandis Tallman, who we, they worked on this transaction in 2017. And so we're, we're indicating that the resolution would hire them and Brian Quint of Quinton Thimmig in, in order to form the financing team to complete this transaction. If you go on to the next slide.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that last statement? Are we expanding our? What, what are we doing here? What, what did you just say?
Well, all this is doing is, is, is page four
Yeah.
shows the debt service on the proposed new lease that would pay off the existing lease.
Sure, I understand that. I thought you, are we using another service, another, is there another relationship that we're adding?
No, there, there.
That we'll be paying?
There's a placement agent underwriter, that's Brandis Tallman. They were involved in the 2017 lease, and we need to have a placement agent or underwriter in the transaction because we're serving you as a municipal advisor. We're prohibited from, except for certain special circumstances, we're, we're prohibited from providing that service to you. So we need that player. And then we also, in order to make the transaction legal, we need a legal legal that can do all the documents and that sort of thing. And that's, that's Quinton Thimmig, Brian Quint, who's on the call today. And so that forms the Finance Committee, or the Finance Team, I should say, to further this, this transaction on through closing.
Okay.
That answer your questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Then if we go to the next slide, there you see the existing amortization schedule in the first column. That's what you're paying now at the 5.4% interest rate. The middle column is the proposed new debt service schedule. And the last column is the additional savings that you would realize by refinancing the 2017 lease from a 5.40 to a 3.45 interest rate. It's about $25,000, $26,000 a year additional, over and above the $1,023 that you already have. That totals.
Mark, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What was the 2017 interest rate, 5.40?
5.40, yes.
Wow, big difference. Thank you.
Yeah, it's about almost 2% difference. There you see the total of projected savings of $491,000. That's in addition to, the next line below is the existing 2017 savings and for a total of $1,515,000. So by refinancing this, you're, you're basically improving your, your, your savings by almost a half a million dollars. You're going from $1,023,000 to $1,500,000. The present value of that savings on the $491,000 is $347,000, which is approximately 12% of the existing par value. And you might recall in your debt management policy, you have a minimum of 3% savings that you want to achieve. So this far exceeds that, that minimum threshold. So you're, you're very, 12% savings is, is quite, quite good.
Mark, just a question on the 1.515 combined projected savings for the 2017 refi under this new program. The 1.023 was over a 21-year horizon. Is this over the same horizon or is it 17 or 18 years?
Good question. The same, same, you can see the amortization schedule of the existing, it goes out to 2037. And we're, we're maintaining the same amortization period. We're not extending it, we're shortening it.
Mark, let me, let me, can I jump in for a sec here? That's a very, very good, good question, Barbara, because there's been three years run on that $1,023,000. And therefore, there's around a little over $700,000 remaining. We're showing what the total would have been theoretically from the start, but you're right, the three years has already run. So it's for the remaining 17 years of the term. Good question.
Thank you.
And I might add that the three years that you had that 2017 lease outstanding, you saved, you pocketed in the general fund savings of approximately $270,000 already. That's in the bank. So the rest of it will accrue to you over a period of time, the remaining period of the, of the life of the, the lease. Any further questions on that slide? Okay, now we'll, we'll jump to the overview of lease revenue bonds. Just to give you a sort of background and an explanation how they work. The lease revenue bonds are a financing vehicle that allows entities to borrow funds secured by lease revenues. Same as, we're doing the same thing as we did with the 2017 lease. And we're also proposing to do the same kind of structure for the UAL refinancing to pay off the existing CALPERS UAL. The lease revenue stream is created by an entity like the town of Fairfax via lease, leaseback sale, installment sale, in which the town sells or leases an asset to its Financing Authority. And simultaneously, the Financing Authority sells or leases the asset back to the town, creating a revenue stream of payments. Those payments come from the town's general fund. The lease transactions are commonly used as a financing vehicle by municipalities throughout California. The town used this structure when using the, when issuing this 2017 lease, which utilized the Town Hall, Pavilion, Fire Station, Corporation Yard as the assets to be leased and leased back between the town and the Financing Authority. The lease assets used in the financing vehicle typically have, in aggregate, a value greater than the borrowed amount. Any questions on that yet? Going to the next slide, page seven. The leased assets.
Sorry, I do have a question. Are we changing what? Are we changing the buildings or anything? Is there any change on the lease? In terms of the scope of the lease?
We're, we're going to get into that exactly on this slide. So that's a great question.
Okay.
This next slide.
You're ahead of this.
Yeah, you, you anticipate it perfectly.
I wanted to like toggle between documents here. Okay.
Okay, the overview of the leased assets is applied to this 2017 lease refinancing and the 2020, 2020 UAL financing. The lease assets anticipated in both UAL financing and the 2017 lease refunding will be assets currently encumbered by the existing lease. That's the Town Hall, the fire station, and the pavilion, and the corporation yard. As well as a portion of the town-owned streets equal to $10 million in value, or approximately 25% of the town streets. Specific streets will be identified by the choice of the town. And the lease structure does not put the town at risk for losing use of its streets. Basically, the lease is just a financing mechanism. You're, you're never, we can have the Bond Counsel talk more in depth on that if you want to drill down on it. But you're, you're not at risk with the town streets, nor are you really at risk with the, the Town Hall, the Corporation Yard, the Fire Department, and, and the Pavilion. The bond documents provide that the reletting remedy or reletting such as Town Hall, in case you didn't pay, will not be applicable to the streets, meaning that the holder of the bonds cannot access use of the streets as its security. If all assets securing the lease are destroyed or become unusable, payments by the town would be abated or suspended until such assets are restored. And if they, if you had 50% of the assets injured or whatever, or unavailable, then you would abate 50% of your payments. So it just, it corresponds with the amount of assets that you have securing the transaction or the lease. The only remedy for failure of the town to make its lease payments relating to the street assets would be a lawsuit by the town, or by bondholders, sorry, brought by bondholders to compel payment by the town. That's the downside risk. But the town being a relatively high-grade entity, the assumption is that you're going to. the assumption is that you're gonna make your payments. And so it's really not, it's a sort of a theoretical non-payment. The buyer, Capital One, is also, they also understand that the remedies listed above are consistent with the description. So they're aware the remedies are limited, and yet they're still very interested in continuing to work with the town. Go to the next slide unless there are other questions. Yep. Go ahead, Renee.
Am I unmuted? Yeah, no, I just wanted to have a little more of an explanation about the difference between in bullet point three, that the lease structure does not put the town at risk for losing use of the streets. And how different is that as relates to the buildings or the courtyard?
Okay, good question. The 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 streets are something that we need in order to facilitate the lease transaction. As as was stated earlier, the least, the amount of the lease is typically secured by assets that amount to approximately the same amount as the amount of the lease. So in that the corporation yard, fire station, et cetera, did not have enough value in order to support the ten million dollar transaction. We needed to add some additional assets, and this town doesn't have any. So we are being creative and using streets. And and Capital One has indicated that they are willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mark. I think I think either I didn't, I didn't say my question clearly, but I I'm trying to understand the difference between having you say it does not put the town at risk of losing the streets. Now, are we at risk at the same level of risk or less risk? That we were under in the two thousand seventeen when we used.
Mark, you want me to run chip in here? The 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 security that you currently have existing under the two thousand seventeen lease will stay the same. There's no difference. Technically, there's a cure, if you don't pay, of the ability of the holder of the lease to come in and relet the buildings and the pavilion, but that's, almost historically has never been done in the state of California. It's a mechanism to do the financing. But the documents do provide, like they would do in most leases, that technical cure in the event of a default. The difference with the lease with with the streets is you don't even have that minimal risk with the streets. There is no way that your streets would ever be lost, no matter, no matter what.
I I can, I can give you an example. We did multiple leases with the city of Vallejo prior to their bankruptcy. When they entered into bankruptcy, for example, they have the library, which is just across the the walkway from City Hall. And the city went into bankruptcy, yet they continued to, and they they abated for an interim period, they abated their payments on the library. Yet, even through bankruptcy, they never lost, and you will never lose ownership of it, but they never lost control, use of the library as a library, it continued on. And then, once the the bankruptcy was worked out, the city continued, resumed making its payments, but on a different pay schedule. But but they never lost use of the library as a library, even though that was a theoretical remedy to relet it as office space or some other type of use. Is that the answer to that?
Yes, thank you. Bruce, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just trying to restate this in a way that is, that's understandable to to the public who's listening. That, and I'm just checking with you to make sure that I'm restating this more or less correctly, that really someone in Capital One made the decision that they were seriously interested in continuing to work with us. And the basis of that decision was not that they could get our buildings or get our streets. The basis of that decision was we were a healthy town. And they would like to to continue to work with us because they have every reason to believe, and we have every reason to believe that this, that we will make the payments and and this will be taken care of. So that's, that's the real security. But in in technical terms, financing has to be based on some kind of securitization. So that's why these things are lined up as securitization. But the real thing, the real reason that we're in this discussion with Capital One right now, we're getting such favorable terms is because Capital One trusts us to be a solid town, and we have been in the past.
You just passed your financial advisors test. You're one of us. That's well put.
Exactly.
I guess I'd like to better understand why we have to put up so much more collateral if we have such great payment history and so forth.
I think it's because we're increasing the amount of what we're actually borrowing to to add not only refinancing the previous thing, but also adding something else because the terms are so favorable right now that it's a good time to do that.
That's exactly. In order to meet the legal requirements, you have of doing a lease and and pledging the general fund, you have to have a leased asset that's equal to or greater than the amount of the financing. And because this financing is the 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 current assets total, I believe about four point six million, something like that, and we needed to get it up to the nine million. And that's why the additional amount is being used by the streets.
And and.
I'm sorry, I missed, it's not, it's just a straight refi of our current, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's correct. We are, we're proposing to refinance the two thousand seventeen lease and add in financing for paying off the CalPERS UAL in the amount of six plus million dollars. So together, they they are approaching ten million dollars of total, total financing. And we'll we'll get to that breakdown very shortly, a little later in the presentation. Yes.
I'll wait on that, thank you.
Do I have a question, Mark? I believe it's for you. So there is something in the staff report about, let's say one of the building gets destroyed. And it talks about, in that event, we would have to put up some other assets. This bullet near the bottom says that if the assets were destroyed or become unusable, payments by the town would be abated or suspended until such assets are restored. And my question is, which one is it?
Well, what what we would do in that instance, if you had just one of the secure, of the assets injured or unavailable, the the lease requires that the asset be available for the use or benefit of the the town in order to be able to make lease payments on that facility. So if you lose the use or use or enjoyment of that facility, then you would abate that. And what we would do is we would substitute a new asset to replace it while that original asset is being fixed or repaired or being restored to its viability.
Okay, so then a follow-up question. Thank you.
We would probably just add some more streets to.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I talked to Garrett about that, but then there is this, in that bullet, it says payments by the town would be abated, suspended until such assets are restored. So let's say, for example, there was a flood and town hall was taken out, which is one of the buildings. And it might take us many years to rebuild town hall. We might, you know, get a mobile trailer or something until we could do that. The question is, during that time, if payments were suspended, let's say it took us three years to bring town hall back, but we substituted some streets. Would we be paying a higher payment schedule after the suspension? How does that work? Is that clear or confusing?
What we would do is we would just substitute for the town hall other assets.
Streets, additional streets.
Such as more.
Okay, but what is this, what is this saying when it says payments by the town would be abated, suspended until?
Can I take this, Mark? In in the event that all of your assets were were destroyed, where they couldn't be used, and therefore you had no assets to substitute, then the payment would be abated. You wouldn't have to make the payments until they they were, they were restored.
Okay, and when they were restored, so let's say it's three years.
Right.
When they were restored, will we be paying at a higher rate to make up?
No, but you would have to make up, no, but you would, I believe, and we have, we have Brian Quinn on. Brian, why don't you go ahead?
It's a good question. So Capital One and every other investor of this type understands that in California, these are called abatement leases. And if you don't have beneficial use and possession of the asset, which is what you're asking about, your obligation to pay abates, but they don't really want you not to pay. They want to know that their payments are going to be made. So when we structure these transactions, we buy what we call rental interruption insurance. We we take, we take two, two things that we do to avoid the abatement situation. So let's just say, for example, that we are using ten million dollars of assets, and you've got obligations to pay ten million dollars. And let's say the, I don't know, let's say the the pavilion is damaged in a fire. And let's say the pavilion's worth two million dollars. We're gonna get a amount of rental interruption insurance that's gonna cover your lease payment obligation with respect to that that asset for the period until it's reconstructed. So the investor doesn't want to take, they don't want you not to pay. They don't want an abatement situation.
Okay, well, I like the idea of the insurance.
Right, and the other one is, so the two, those are the two general risks. There's two general risks of abatement. One is you lose the beneficial use and possession of the asset because it's damaged or destroyed. And the other one is that there's a title defect. Because remember, you're paying because you have beneficial use and possession of the town hall and the fire station and and the courtyard. If some reason the true and correct owner comes in and says, get off my land, then you don't have beneficial use and possession, then we buy title insurance. And the title company then pays because they have taken the risk that you own the property by providing the insurance. So that's, your question is very good, and the answer is, the investor doesn't want the asset, your your payments to abate, be abated. So we provide the the kind of the, what we need to do between the casualty loss or the loss of use and when it's available for use again.
Thank you very much.
Barbara, thank you for the awesome question. And thank you, Brian and Ben and, is it Mark? Sorry, I'm still learning everyone's questions, names. And is it Quinn? Brian, your response on the rental interruption insurance, where is it written in our contractual relationship? Or where is it written in writing, your commitment to do that?
It's gonna be in the lease agreement. It will be, it will be a provision in the lease agreement that requires you to get rental interruption insurance.
We get it.
We will, we'll arrange it for you.
Okay.
And all that.
Stephanie, if I could just jump in for a sec, this, today, we're not approving all the documents. You're just approving going forward. September second, we'll have all of the documents and then be able to go over the documents, all the terms and and conditions and provisions, and we'll be sure to highlight that part of it. So you can see exactly how all of that will work before you approve the documents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we go to slide eight then. And I believe that that concludes our overview of the of the the leased assets. Now we go to the overview of the CalPERS system. As you know, most public agencies in California participate in the CalPERS retirement system to fund retirement benefits for your employees. CalPERS is the largest public retirement system in the US. The town of Fairfax participates in this pooled retirement system. The town pays into the system an annual deposit based on percentage of payroll, which, when invested by CalPERS at an assumed rate of return, currently seven percent, and added to the cash deposited by the town, is actuarially designed to provide sufficient funds to pay required retirement benefits to its employees. CalPERS investment performance, if if investment performance does not meet the realized and assumed rate of return of seven percent needed for an employer to fund its long-term actuarial requirements to pay retirees in its program, or if the employer does not make sufficient contributions to its CalPERS fund, the shortfall is calculated and allocated to the employer in the form of its unfunded accrued liability. The next slide continues that. The unfunded accrued liability or UAL is an obligation of the local agency or Fairfax, and the agency accrues and pays an annual cost of seven percent on that UAL, which is is added to the unfunded portion. This cost represents a return that CalPERS assumes it could have earned on on additional funds had the agency fully funded its obligations. The schedule of UAL payments is provided to each employer, the town in this instance, an amortization schedule to pay down your obligation over a fixed period of years. The schedule for Fairfax currently runs through the year two thousand forty-six, forty-seven, or twenty years. Future performance, if investment performance exceeds the expected rate of seven percent, the net benefit is credited to pay down the existing UAL. If no UAL exists, it remains as a credit balance to pay future UAL. If investment performance is less than the expected rate, the shortfall is added to the UAL or creates a new UAL, UAL, which is amortized in the payment schedule along with the previous existing payments. The town current, town's current UAL is an obligation similar in many ways to other long-term liabilities on its balance sheet, although its terms can be more flexible than a bond or similar fixed scheduled liability. It is effectively a debt with the annual interest cost calculated at CalPERS assumed rate of return of seven percent on the unpaid balance, plus the amount necessary to amortize the principal or the provided timeframe. Next slide. Solutions to pay your CalPERS unfunded liability, accrued liability, is you can continue to pay CalPERS based on the existing twenty-six-year amortization schedule. It, you're currently paying on a twenty-six-year amortization schedule or a shorter term schedules as outlined in CalPERS. They give you several options of how to pay, but currently you're on a twenty-six-year amortization schedule. Or you could pay off the UAL in part or in full with the surplus funds of the town and or continue to participate and fund a section one fifteen trust reserve as appropriate. We can get into a description of that if you wish a little bit later. Or you can pay off the UAL in part or full using proceeds from the issuance of a lease revenue bonds, which is the recommended option, you know, before you tonight. The next slide. We go to solution three.
Mark, can I ask a question? Go back to the previous slide, please.
Sure.
I think this is, I believe, a few years ago, we did fund a section one fifteen trust reserve. Just, that's right, Garrett, right? We did that a couple of years ago to start saving more money for the UAL.
That's correct.
Okay, and what, since we, I don't know how much we have in that, I don't, I think I was mayor. I think we did it several years ago. But what happens to that money? Do we leave it in there in case we get a new UAL? Should, I mean, CalPERS is already signaling that seven percent will probably change in the fall. So we still keep that.
Well, the, just to clarify, the section one fifteen trust. Sorry, I choked up. Excuse me. Give me a second, I'll answer that.
This subject just chokes him up.
Sorry about that. I choked up about section one fifteen trust. Basically, this one sixteen, fifteen trust basically is reserved for any retirement obligation. So it's not strictly related to UAL. One reason the council did it was so that we could put money into account. And if we get blips in our CalPERS payments, whether it was for the UAL or just regular retirement obligations, and we wanted to smooth what that payment was, we could tap into the one fifteen trusts. So there's a hundred and fifty thousand plus the interest that we earned for it. So it's still good, we could use it at any time for any retirement obligations.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I thought. And I guess the next slide is gonna talk about the ideas, if we pay this off now, potentially we're done, but we probably aren't because CalPERS. because CalPERS is signaling that in the fall, they may change the investment rate. But anyone else want, no?
Yeah, yeah, Barbara, let me just clarify one thing for you. I think you're conflating the stated rate of return that they expect to get with their actual results. So every year, they assume that they're going to make 7%. If they don't make the 7%, the city, the town is going to owe that difference because that becomes the UAL. But also every year, they give a report as to what they've actually earned. And you're correct. It looks, every indication is that the results for this last fiscal year, even though the market went, sold off for a while, but did extremely well, they're probably going to be, based on the early indications before they report, in the 4% to 5% range, which means that a new UAL of around 2% will be, will be, will be added to everybody's UAL. Every, every, every municipality in the state. So it takes a long time before they change that benchmark rate. For example, we started looking at this, you may remember in, in years ago, they actually originally started around 8.5% was the goal. Then they lowered it to eight, then they lowered it to seven and three quarters, then they lowered it to seven and a half. Took three, four, five years each time before they decided to do that. And then last year, they started at the 7%. So we're, we're left with 7% probably for the next three or four years at least. It's possible they could lower that again. But anyway, so that's, that's what the goal is. The creation of either a new UAL or a paydown of the existing UAL is based upon their performance. So for example, if they earned 8%, they would have a 1% positive. And if you've paid off your UAL and you have a zero balance, there's no place for that 1% to be applied. It sits in your account as a reserve, almost like your 115 trust, although it doesn't earn interest, unfortunately, but it sits in your, in your, in your account. And then in the following year, if they now earn only 6%, that 1% negative, they, the money is sitting there to take care of that. But if they're, so anyway.
That's great. And so it doesn't matter if they change their investment rate. We still accrue a new UAL if they don't make the 7%, which is highly likely they won't. Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure thing.
Now we have another municipal advisor on the town council.
Yeah, you know, first we're training everybody. Great.
Going to slide 11. The solutions to pay the CalPERS unfunded liability. The solution number three, the one that we're recommending, is to pay off the entire UAL, the town UAL in full, using proceeds from the issuance of the lease revenue bonds. And we want to emphasize that if the current UAL is paid in full, just as a prior discussion, CalPERS investment performance will determine whether additional UAL is created in the future. Should CalPERS fail to achieve their projected rate of return, the shortfall will cause the creation of a new UAL, but it would be a much smaller UAL. It would not be in the amount of 6 million. It would be whatever the shortfall is for that year. And your, your 115 trust may be sufficient to, to offset that. The amount of savings that potentially be achieved with this refunding of the existing UAL may also be enough to offset that, that future UAL should it appear. Conversely, should CalPERS achieve higher than expected returns, the excess would be credited to the employer's fund and thus available to offset any future increases in the UAL caused by subsequent underperformance in a given year. This is exactly the discussion we just completed. There's no possible way to eliminate, eliminate the potential for future UAL to accrue during, due to underperformance of CalPERS without existing, exiting the CalPERS system entirely. You're part of the system. You're subject to the vagaries or the performance of the, the portfolio. Payoff solutions allow entities to pay down liabilities presently owed with the ability to save money in the future by reducing interest expense. Eliminating today's UAL is in no way a means of eliminating the future, the risk of future underperformance by Cal, by CalPERS. I think you, your, your question addressed that just previously. And an excellent question. Going to the next slide of page 12. There, the town had, you have six retirement plans with CalPERS and the balances summarized below. The miscellaneous number one, an amount of almost 2.5 million. Miscellaneous two, Pepper, safety one and two of 3.6 and 3, 300,000, and then Pepper Safety Police. We are proposing to deal with only those that are highlighted in black because they're the largest funds. The others are so small and Pepper has a totally different approach to things. So we were, we're not recommending that we include those in the refinancing. We're only looking at the miscellaneous one tier, the, the safety one and two tiers. The projected balance as of July or June 30th, 21, are taken from CalPERS actuarial valuation report to the town of Fairfax dated July of 19. Based on audited figures as of July of 2018, CalPERS will verify these balances when a closing date is established. Bud has had a longstanding relationship with CalPERS and he has got sort of inroads with them where he can get updated balances. When we just, we set a payoff date, then we will contact CalPERS and get an updated payoff figure. So these UAL balances you see here are as of 2018. But when we, if, if and when we go forward with this, we will get actual payoff figures before we actually, and we'll resize the transaction accordingly. Typically, when they update those figures, the unfunded balance is larger than what you see before you. So when we come back with the resolutions, even though the current numbers are, are figured at about 9.6 million, we're asking for authorization to go up to 10.6 million. But we'll, we'll do whatever the actual amount is at CalPERS. But historically, our, our experience has been that the numbers have been greater than, than what you see in front of you. Going to the next.
Mark, one quick thing. The goal would be to get a number from CalPERS that will pay their best estimate and the available numbers that they have so that you have paid off, you will have paid off all of your unfunded through June 30, 2021. So that starting next fiscal year, you will not have any unfunded liabilities that are due. The only thing you'll have to pay, if you go ahead with this, is are the lease payments that are replacing that. And when we come back September 2nd, we'll have a much more. To be.
Rob? Or no, that's not Rob, sorry.
It's Stephanie. No offense taken whatsoever. Just for my education, this is very curious to me that, so Michael or Garrett, so there's no, we don't have access to data that's any more recent than June 30th as far as our CalPERS liability?
CalPERS has a pretty long lag as far as their information goes.
That's a very long lag.
Yeah. And, and so what, what we do is we'll, we'll call them. And Bud, Bud will actually make the call. He will call them and ask them for updated figures based on the payoff date. And they will recalculate and give us their best estimate.
No, I can answer. Municipalities don't have access to a database. I would think.
I can answer that question. What they do is every year, and Garrett and Michael know this, they see it, there's a CalPERS report. What Mark was talking about and what we have to legally say to you here is that the firm balance of the unfunded is only audited through June 30, 2018. Every year, they send out a report. So and they're generally in July or August. So last year's report, July, it was based, July of 2019, shows what the balance is as of audited 2018. What a very good estimate is because they have a lot of those figures already. They just haven't audited through, I'm sorry, June 30th, through June 30th of 19. And then they show a projected balance that they have calculated based on all the available information for June 30, 20, June 30, 21, and June 30, 22. We're utilizing the June 30, 21 as a starting point. When they give us the real figures that they currently have in September, when we, when we, we call them, once we call to get the balances, they will give a more accurate analysis of the balance that should pay off everything as of June 30, 21. So when you pay that off, by CalPERS count, you're down to zero. When they complete their audit for the June 30, 2020, which won't be until June 30, 2022, there may be some adjustment up or down from there. Based on the way their performance has been, we think that that, that it's, because it's been pretty much in the 8%, 5%, close to 6.8%, close to that 7% number. We're not looking for any big, big changes that will be a huge surprise at this point. So I think the number we will have to pay off when we're ready to, to do that will be fairly close to the, to the correct number.
But that number, that number will not be an audited number. It'll be, it'll be a guess.
It's like doing your in-house statements and then doing the audit. Your in-house statements are going to come pretty close, but they just can't be relied upon by the world until you actually do the audit. That's kind of the same, same situation.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, Ben, I have a question. I think I heard you say that the payoff amount that you're going to get from them, if we go forward, would be June 30th, 2021?
Yeah, because we, right now, you, you're, you're in the, you're in the July 1, 2020 to the June 30, 2021 fiscal payment period. So we, we can't go back and pay what you're now, I, Garrett, do you guys pay, you pay the annual, right?
Yes.
Yeah. See, there's two ways that, that, that the unfundeds are paid. A town or city has the ability, if they pay in the first 15 days of the fiscal year, that is between July 1 and July 15, I think it is. You get a little, you get a small discount and you pay a lump sum. And then you have no more payments due under the unfunded until June 30, 2021.
Okay.
Some, some cities pay monthly. You paid total. So we want to be sure we're paying off when your next obligation would be.
I wasn't aware that they could give you that figure through next year. So that's great. Thank you.
Yep. Sure thing.
Okay. Going on to slide 13 then. Your UAL paydown, annual paydown for the next coming year is you can see totals 456,000 and change. If you're made, if the payments are made for 2020, 21, the next payments are due as just, as Bud just said, in July of 21 and continue annually based on the payment schedule provided CalPERS that goes out through 2047. Okay. Then we have the unfunded liability payment schedule. Here you see the payoff or the annual payments for the safety first tier, safety second tier, and miscellaneous first tier with a total starting at 456,000 and then each of the payments later. And you see that that escalates up through about the middle up to 724,000 in '31, '32, and then it starts going down again. So this is, this is what we're working with. What we will do is we'll take that last column and going to the next slide, you can see this is what we're proposing as far as the sources and uses. The par amount of the new unfunded, or the new lease that would pay, take care of this unfunded liability is $6.5 million. That's based on the preliminary numbers that may, for likely will increase slightly. There you see the uses. It pays off the balance of the miscellaneous and the two safety plans totaling 6.4 million. We've got estimated costs of issuance of 90,000. That includes our fee, bond council fee, the placement agent fee, legal fees for the, the private placement buyer, Capital One. Their attorney charges about 7,500 in order to review the documents on their behalf. Town attorney will have a minimal fee in order to review the documents on behalf of the town. So that's what the 90,000 is made up of. Yes?
So I got a little bit confused on the payment schedule. So is it, is it two, two payments? Or what, what, one?
Go, go back one slide, please. There we go. The, the payment that the town would make for those three plans is listed in the last column there, the 456,000, the 523 and so forth. That's at the 7% interest rate.
But your answer to your question, Stephanie, that's the total payment that we'd be, you'd be make up. For example, looking at 22, you would pay the 262,000, the, the 17,000 and the 176, those, that totals 476. One payment of 476 would cover those three plans.
456. But you would also be making your payments on the Pepper plans and the other ones too.
Yeah, which is small. Yep.
So we continue to pay annually?
Yes.
Well, if, if you don't, if you don't refinance the UAL, these would be your payments.
Yeah.
That's what's confusing me. This is not option three.
No, no, but Mark, let me just try this. If, if you, if you don't do anything, you say you don't want to move forward, then going forward, this is the payment schedule that you're going to look at to pay off your unfundeds.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, if you do go forward, you're going to have a new bond, a new lease issue, the proceeds of which are going to pay the, off that whole obligation. So these payments would go away and now you're left with new lower payments.
Right. And so is that, if the option three, how, what's the payment schedule? Is it just one or two?
We're going to show you that coming up, right? Right next.
We've got another investment banker coming online.
Yeah. Right. There we go. Here's your payment schedule.
Here's your proposed debt service for the new lease that pays off the existing UAL. You can see the amortization schedule is, and the payments are at 3.45% interest rate. The debt service is in the last column over there. You see that? The next slide will show the, I believe, the comparison. Here you see the first column, which is your existing payments over, going out to 2047. The proposed new payments are the middle column and they only go out for 20 years or 17, 18 years. And then the last column shows the savings that you would accrue, the difference. You're reducing your payments by about $80,000 a year for the first, the remaining term of the exist, the proposed lease. And then you'd have a bunch of savings. We're shortening the pay. This portion of the UAL completely paid off in 20 years instead of 27 years. Or actually in 17 years versus 27 years. So not only are you saving interest, but you're also shortening the turn, the payoff. So you get out of the, the, this portion of the UAL in a much shorter period of time. And that frees up significant cash flow over the last 10 years of what, if you don't do anything. Is that clear?
Yes.
The next page, we talk about, we go back to the 2017 lease to review the savings there of 491,000 plus the one, the 1,023,000 on the previous, on the existing 2017 lease. The next slide talks about.
Totals. There we go.
Show the combined amortization schedules of the, the, what is this here?
2017 lease and the UAL. And the, and the, and the new lease.
Okay, okay. The first column is the savings that you.
No, it's the existing, existing debt service. The first column is the existing debt service that you're currently paying on the 2017 lease and the UAL payments that we just went over. Those are your total payments that the, that the town is facing every year. The middle column is the new combined lease refunding and the payoff of the UAL for 20 years. And then the last column are the savings that you're generating for the town, totaling 3.6 million plus the 1,023 that we already have locked in for a total of 4.6. Keeping in mind that that 270,000 on the lease payment has already been realized.
So Ben, can I play that back to you? So the first column is current state if we do nothing?
Correct.
The second column is. The second column is refi, is it with a proposal that you?
Yes, refining the lease and paying off the UAL. Yes.
You add in the streets.
Correct.
And option three, plus option three.
Correct.
And then column three is the, the net savings.
Correct. Well put.
So we're looking at four point six five million over seventeen years.
Right.
Yeah, something like that, right?
Yes, and again, to remind, with the debt management policy that you do have in place, looking at the total here, the recommendation would be that the minimum savings you should have to do this type of refunding is three percent of the outstanding bonds. This represents twenty-three percent, very, very high. You don't see too many that are that, that high percent.
And can I ask a question that I should have asked about a half an hour ago? Um, for a town of our size, is there a precedent for, um, using streets as a collateral? Can you, because I don't, I've certainly never done this before, so have you done this before?
Yes, in fact, we'll let, but maybe Brian, Quinn, you could, you could weigh in on this. Um, the, the streets are kind of there for, they were not used very much, except very occasionally. Now, because of the circumstances with the validation suit no longer being a viable option, we're starting to see more cities do the streets as a, as collateral, particularly in the larger deals. I believe that there is a, uh, that there were several deals, and we provided a list of the, uh, of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, of a couple of the, of the, uh, cities that have issued, uh, this type of lease transaction to pay off POBs, uh, in the amounts of a hundred million, two hundred million at a time.
The answer to your question is that it is not that common, uh, because generally investors want, they want buildings. Um, but in a situation where there aren't enough assets, like the, in the case of Fairfax, they sometimes are willing to take streets. And I think that, again, Capital One, uh, in this scenario is saying, fine, we'll take the streets along with those buildings because we have faith in Fairfax. Um, but Bud's indicating, I worked on a transaction recently. It's not Marin County, and it's not a town of this size, but the city of West Covina, uh, did a financing recently also to pay off their PERS UAL. Um, and theirs was two hundred million dollars, and they clearly did not have two hundred million dollars of, of buildings, and they use streets. And the market, that was a publicly offered transaction, market was fine with it. But the answer is every transaction, it's going to depend on the quality of the, of the city. Uh, it's going to depend on the facts, like you don't have the assets, uh, and you have an investor who's willing to go down that avenue because it has faith in the, in the city. So I think that's, I hope that's the answer to your question.
Stephanie, the, the last page of, of the staff report has all of those, uh, cities. And Larkspur is one of them.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to add something there. We all recall when we were growing up that, uh, well, maybe we don't all recall it, but US dollar used to be backed by gold. And then it was get backed by silver, and now it's just backed by the full faith and credit of the United States.
That's absolutely correct. You have to be old like I am to really remember all of that.
Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, well, moving forward then, um, what we wanted to do is give you, uh, an overview or a comparison of, uh, there are two methods of selling the transaction, the financing. One would be a public offering where the, uh, bonds are sold to moms and pops and institutional investors, uh, as a public offering. There's a, an official statement that's prepared and, and distributed. Uh, it's, it's distributed to a wide variety of investors. The other option is the public or the, uh, the Capital One or a private placement transaction. That's what's being recommended here for the reasons, uh, to be shown here. Um, the public offering, we estimate that the, uh, the cost, the par amount or the size of the loan would have to be a ten point one-three million. The, we estimate the true interest cost, which is the present value of the interest cost plus cost of issuance would be three percent estimated, and the savings would be about three point four million dollars. That's over the life of the transaction. The Capital One proposal is a smaller amount of loan, total loan of nine point four-six-five million. The interest rate, as we previously stated, is three point four-five percent, and the total savings over the, uh, seventeen-year period is three point six million. It's about two hundred thousand dollars more than the public offering. And if we go to the next slide, um, this will show uh, the sources and uses, why there's a difference in the amount of the loan. The private placement, we have a nine point four million dollars worth of, of loan, and that pays off the three funds. Then we've got an escrow, uh, to pay off the two thousand seventeen lease in the amount of two million seven ninety-seven and cost of issuance of a hundred eighty-one thousand, again, estimated. The reason that that is higher is because we, in addition to the other costs that we would have in a, um, excuse me, is lower, I'm sorry, I'm confusing. The first set is the nine point four million, that's the private placement, where we have nine point four million, pay off the three, uh, trans, the three UALs, and then pay off the two thousand seventeen lease. The cost of issuance is a hundred eighty-one thousand estimated. And then we compare that with the public offering where we have ten point one million dollars. We pay off the three, the same three, uh, UALs. There we have, also, we pay off the two thousand seventeen lease. But a big difference is we have interest and penalties on the two thousand seventeen lease of five hundred seventy-seven thousand or five hundred seventy-eight thousand. Those fees are waived by Capital One. If we sell the private placement directly to Capital One, tho- those five point seven-eight million dollars worth of interest and penalties to pay off the, uh, two thousand seventeen lease are waived by Capital One because they're getting to replace the two thousand seventeen lease with a new nine point four million dollar transaction by the same, uh, town of Fairfax. The costs of issuance are slightly higher, another, what, uh, eighty thousand dollars? Because we have, in addition to the fees that we have for the private placement, we also have disclosure council, we have a trustee, we have a number of other, uh, expenses that we do not have with a private placement. So that, then going back to the, um, to the previous slide, that hopefully will explain why the, um, the public offering versus the, uh, Capital One proposal provides more savings. Going forward, two more slides, sorry. I think it shows a comparative debt service, no, forward, down to twenty-two, I think it is. Is there, is that the last slide, twenty-one?
What are you looking for, Mark?
Is there another slide after this? No, that's the last.
No, it's just a slide.
So, but the, the amortization schedule for the public offering would have a little bit lower interest rate, but you've got more debt.
That's the slide you want, right here.
That, you have more debt to pay off at a lower interest rate, but you, with the Capital One proposal, you have a smaller loan, but at a slightly higher interest rate, and the differential in savings is, is you can see here in the bottom line. So our recommendation would be for you to, if you decide to proceed, would be to proceed with the private placement option because it, it optimizes your savings.
Uh, if you hold that slide for a second, I want to add, uh, a couple of comments. Uh, one of the things that, this is pretty obvious that the Capital One proposal is better than the public offering, but we're also comparing apples to oranges in one respect. The Capital One proposal, assuming you accept it, uh, by August twenty-first, and we close by September thirtieth, which should be no problem, that three million six in savings is locked. The savings on the public offering at three point four million is subject to what the market is at the time you could put a public offering together and you would go to market, which generally takes about forty-five days or so. So that means that for that forty-five days, if the interest rates go up at all, and they've been extremely volatile, as we mentioned earlier, that three million four, uh, savings might even drop significantly more because, uh, because of the fact that the, uh, that the interest rate will not be three percent, but might be three twenty or three thirty or three forty. The fact that we have the locked rate makes it, you know, even more important to, uh, uh, to look at the Capital One proposal very seriously.
And as enumerated in that second paragraph there, if you have ten basis points move.
Yes.
In the interest rate, that equates to about ninety thousand dollars of change in the savings. So if, if, uh, the public offering went from a three percent to a three point ten, your savings would be reduced by another ninety thousand dollars for each ten basis points approximately.
I think the other piece in this slide talks about that if we go with Capital One, um, we would have their offer to waive the call provisions on the two thousand seventeen lease.
Exactly, yeah.
Which saves money, and if we reject that, we don't have that. So we're still kind of, I don't know if the term stuck is correct, but.
Yes, right.
There's probably a financial term that means stuck.
That's correct. That's a good term. I like that.
Can you just quickly go to the slide twenty?
Sure.
I think the comment or the point that you just made is really, really important. Um, and I would tie that footnote of the public offering, you know, to that interest rate, second paragraph. So I, is this deck on the, um, I don't, is it going to be made public? I hope so, because I, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. And then in this column, we have public offering in Cap One. On the next slide, you refer to it as private, so just from a nomenclature standpoint.
That's the Cap One is, okay.
You have one on the left and one on the right, so you kind of switch them.
Sure, sure.
I'm just sensitive to that kind of thing.
Good point. That, that was an oversight on our part. We should have been clearer on that. That's correct. Cap, a, a private placement could go to any series of banks. We just happen to have the Cap One proposal that really is attractive and locked in. So, yeah, our, our next presentation, when we do this, we'll be sure to keep that consistent. That's a good, 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 good catch.
And my feedback to you is that this presentation has been phenomenally clear, and I tend to be kind of a tough nut on that kind of thing. And, uh, I, I really prefer that this kind of information is abundantly clear for, I, I want it to be something that like a twelve-year-old can digest, and I think you've done such a fantastic job, so thank you very much.
I, I, I don't know, were you at the meeting when we made that first presentation back in, whenever it was, April?
I was.
Yeah, and I remember the instructions you gave, not necessarily you specifically. Please come back with something that is very understandable. So we really put our efforts to do that, and it's, it's nice to hear that, uh, that it's received that way. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can tell you put a lot of time and energy in this, and I, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's, it's very important for us to have you well informed so you can make an intelligent decision. And that's, that's what this is all about. And I might, I might circle back that I think Garrett did a very good job in his staff report as far.
I understand you. I was going to get to that.
Yeah.
So then, as far as, and I'll, I'll, uh, extend those thanks as well. A very good job. You, you folks have been very consistently great in, in explaining this. Um, and as far as the, the comments, Stephanie, that these, this slide show that we've just looked at should be public, it is in our packet. So I believe the exact slides are, are currently on the, uh, on the website in public.
I'm in Colorado in the packets of Fairfax, so. I never got my packet, Bruce, but thanks.
Okay.
So can I just add one quick thank you? Um, when this was going to be on the August agenda, I sent quite a number of questions, and you guys were kind enough to prepare responses to those, which helped me understand it. And I believe back for the August fifth meeting, you also did kind of a public FAQ document, which was included in the, the supplement. And I think that was also really helpful, so I want to thank you for that. I just want to mention one thing to Garrett. Uh, when we do take this up, if we do move forward with the resolution, the old date of August fifth is on the resolution, so we need to make sure we would correct that in any motion that we do. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good catch.
And so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, any other, uh, any other questions for, um, for our, our experts? Please go ahead and ask now, and then, um, I want to see if anyone in the public wants to ask any questions or make any comments.
Mayor, if you will. Um, this is not actually, I mean, I, I think that this is an excellent presentation, and it really goes to the heart of, well, you know, you've got to explain to the council who's really giving it some intention here, but also it's the public, yeah, this is the public's money. And, um, I think the, the bigger picture is, is this unfunded, well, what you hear about in the paper all the time is unfunded pension liabilities, which is what the CalPERS things is, and, you know, I'm just trying to simplify it for the public a little bit. Those quote unfunded liabilities, well, we're funding those liabilities, and, um, we are reducing the cost to the town of those liabilities, first by taking it away from CalPERS and, and refinancing it as we did a few years ago. And now with this move here, um, reducing the cost further. And, you know, for both what we did then and for more of unfunded liabilities that come out of the CalPERS thing. I mean, it's, it's unfortunately a fact of life, and it's kind of like refinancing your house, only it's not your mortgage payments, it's the, you know, the liabilities that the town has for employee retirement and things like that.
You're moving, you're moving from one obligation to another, is all.
Yes. So, uh, but it, it works out to save the town and the people of Fairfax money. So that's, in essence, what it was. And that perhaps could be something reflected in its staff report, but hopefully that's clear to the public. So I just wanted to mention that for their benefit.
Okay, um, so let's go ahead and see if there is any member of the public that would like to comment here. Michelle, do you have any hands raising?
I do not see any hands raised at this moment. I see one hand raised at this moment.
Okay, let's invite him in.
Okay, and that is Chance Cutrano.
Hi, Council. Uh, yeah, I'm just hanging in here, uh, following along with this, but I just wanted to, uh, also, uh, commend the, this firm. I, I thought it was really clear, and I really appreciated, as a member of the public, having all of these slides in this deck and being able to walk through this side by side and look at this beforehand and get a sense of the differences, especially, you know, between this, this public offering and the private offering and the cost savings. And it's, it's really, really helpful and, and, uh, not watered down, but stripped down so I can get right, right to the brass tacks and understand what's going on. So, uh, thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Seeing none?
I, yeah, I don't see anymore either.
Okay, all right, great. So, um, Council, uh, we need to make, uh, consider the resolution as is before us. Um, any other final comments or?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I would just, uh, I would definitely support this action, and I just wanted to add, having served on the Subcommittee of MCCMC that was, uh, looking at the, uh, pension and OPEB situation. Um, this is, this is the, uh, what we're dealing with, and this town is doing very, very well in dealing with it. I'm so glad for that. It would be very difficult to be on this council if we were inheriting the kind of mess that some towns have, have had of this. Um, it really, in core, it goes back, these, these unfunded liabilities go back to. Um, it really, in core, it goes back, these, these unfunded liabilities go back to, as was referred to, this currently seven percent assumed rate of return that CalPERS has, so they do all their calculations based on the assumption that their mostly stocks and bonds that they have invested our retirement money into are going to return seven percent, but they don't actually, and it actually used to be even higher than that. So there was a point back when, uh, back when the economic boom was in full swing, that the assumed rate of return was set at this exorbitant amount. And, uh, I remember back at that time, there was a, I, I very seldom look at it, but I happened to look at a Wired magazine at that time, and Wired magazine had as their feature cover article, "The End of the Economic Cycle." They actually had a full article saying that because the, the, uh, people who were working on internet stuff in Silicon Valley were so smart and so cool that it was just going to change everything, and we wouldn't even have an economic cycle, and it was going to be, they called it the long boom, it was just going to go on forever. And it didn't work out that way, and that's really the, the root of the fact that so many towns are really suffering by this difference between the assumed rate of return and the actual rate of return. Every year they fall behind, and then there's, this is all kind of set up politically because the people who have been on the CalPERS, the, uh, board to, to set this all up have been predominantly the, uh, the representatives of the people who are benefiting from these retirement things, and so they want to set things up to where this is going to work out well for, for the retirees, which makes sense, but it kind of has shifted too far in that direction to where we're all living in this kind of, where the numbers don't really add up, and every year we get these UALs added to us. So, um, following what John was saying, of just trying to explain what it is that we're having to refinance here. But the refinance that we're considering tonight, and that we'll consider again on September second, uh, for the final adoption of the final papers, is, is really basically just looking at a much lower interest rate, which the, the, uh, which we have available to us right now, and the fact that we've got a very, uh, very beneficial offer that's put before us by, um, by Capital One because they want to keep the business, and so we're considering going forward, and I would, I would support doing this.
Okay, um, I, I, I just want to express my thanks to all of you and for all the hard work, multiple meetings, the finance authority, and, uh, and also a special thanks to Michael, the Brett, and to Garrett for all the hard work. I think we're in excellent shape and obviously in good hands, so, um, a, a hearty thank you to you all. Stephanie?
Yeah, I just, all right, one more clarification, I am looking at Attachment D, which is the examples of the pension obligations, that didn't necessarily address the, the street question, Renee, so I just wanted to make sure that you're clear on that. That's just the examples of pension obligations, but not necessarily examples of cities putting up streets.
Oh, oh, no, okay, thanks for the clarification. I was looking at it, trying to figure out if that was what they were talking about that was in the staff report.
Our report talks about Redondo Beach and West Covina, which are much larger cities than ours.
Yeah, so.
And it's relatively new because the validation studies no longer are working because of those lawsuits.
Got it.
Anyway, I'm wondering if I could make a motion, so.
Well, I wasn't done, Barbara.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I also wanted to thank Michael and Garrett, you know, I was very uncomfortable, uh, going into all this because, you know, this is a lot of, um, liability, and so I just really appreciate the time you put into the staff report and with our partners. Again, I think this presentation was fantastic, so thank you very much.
We appreciate the nice words.
Uh, so with that, Barbara, if you'd like to make a motion?
I would love to. So I would like to adopt a resolution authorizing the commencement of proceedings in connection with the issuance and sale of lease revenue bonds of the Fairfax Financing Authority to finance and refinance pension obligations of the town to the California Public Employees Retirement System, CalPERS, retaining an underwriter, placement agent, bond counsel, and disclosure counsel, and directing certain actions, including the acceptance of the proposal from Capital One Public Funding LLC in order to lock in the interest rate offered by such proposal, with one change to the resolution. On the resolution at the end, it says the foregoing resolution was duly adopted, blah, 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 and it has the fifth day of August, it should be the nineteenth day of August twenty twenty.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, a second, Ackerman, uh, Councilmember Hellman.
Hi.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye, and, uh, the motion carries, and with great thanks to you all.
Thank you. I'd just like to add one, one thing, so now we need to be sure that we accept that Capital One term sheet, uh, by the twenty first. So Garrett, we'll give you a call in the morning, if you're available, uh, we'll coordinate with you on, uh, your signing that, that term sheet and returning.
Just, uh, you have my cell numbers, call me on my cell number.
Will do, terrific, thank you. Yes, that's what we need, absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned, and, uh, thank you, everyone, and we will reconvene in our regular September second Fairfax Town Council meeting.
Great.
Thank you, bye. All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you.